Meeting, December 1st, 2020, 6:00 PM. I'd like you all to join with the board in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the first item on the agenda for tonight is public comments. Before we begin, for those of you who are watching at home, we do have a setup that should be scrolling on your TV, an email address or a point of contact. So if you're unable to be here for whatever reason, you should be able to submit a comment that can be read into the record tonight. So without any further ado, who would like to be recognized? Yes, please.
That one's on. Why do we have that? I know, I'm trying to...
Yeah.
I see you have the fact on the agenda, and then I just don't understand why are we still continuing with that, considering how, you know, things have gone with the town of Dennis. Just looking at anything straight on the something that they voted on, that is in the documentation of the school committee, I mean, the school district, and we want to entangle ourselves further with the town of Dennis on anything at all?
This is the only...
On West, that's implying that the town of Yarmouth... I was listening, I did speak to the school committee, and I suggested that it be their project, with their documents that are being...
Is it a Sony TV?
They're the ones who have to remind Dennis to make up the nearly fifteen thousand dollars that they owe us, the town of Yarmouth. And if they haven't done that yet, I would like for you guys to issue a letter, and I hope that I will see a copy of such a letter in the packet in the next meeting. If you will remind them that they have to pay, I just think for us to continue, any further encampments is totally out of question.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be recognized for public comments? I'm going to ask you, Dan, now that we have all this new technology and these new approaches, we have any other comments?
Well, this, the Zoom activity is for just members of the Capitol Budget Committee. It's not, it's just a pilot tonight, just so that maybe next meeting it'll be active for the public.
Okay.
So it's just more a matter of we're trying to work all the bugs out of our system. I don't have any other public comment.
Have we had any public comments that should be noted?
Not at the moment.
Okay, well, it's, we're moving on to the next agenda item. So the next agenda item is public hearings, water rate increase. This is the second public hearing. And before we proceed too much further, I'm going to ask if there's a board member who would be willing to sort of read this into their record.
I will.
Thank you, Tracy.
The town of Yarmouth Department of Public Works public hearing. Notice hereby given that two public hearings will be held at the Board of Selectmen meeting at 6:00 PM, Yarmouth Town Hall in the hearing room, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, on November 10th, 2020, and December 1st, 2020, concerning a proposed increase of water rates in Yarmouth. Written comments will be accepted by the Board of Selectmen via email at selectmen@yarmouth ma.us until 4:30 PM on November 6, 2020. Verbal comments will be accepted at each public hearing starting at 6:00 PM. Persons interested in these changes are encouraged to attend. Proposed changes currently, users are billed a meter fee quarterly and a usage charge annually. This proposal will change usage charges to quarterly as well. Also, fees and rates increased are as follows. Perhaps we could just put that, I know we read this into the record the last time, but if we have it, maybe we could, if we could just put it up there instead of having to read all of it, that'd be great.
Well, you did an outstanding job reading it into the record last time.
Okay, well, I'll just kind of read it then, okay. So quarterly meter fees, smaller than one inch currently is $21, effective January 1, 2021 would be $23, and effective July 1, 2022 would be $26. A meter size of one inch is currently $45, effective January 1, 2021 would be $50, effective July 1, 2022 is $55. A meter size of an inch to an inch and a half, $225 currently, 2021 would be $248, 2022 would be $277. A two-inch meter size is currently $240, and 2021 proposed to be $264, 2022 proposed to be $296. A three-inch meter size is currently $255, 2021 proposed is $281, 2022, $14. A four-inch meter size is currently $270, 2021 would be $297, 2022 would be $333. A six-inch meter size is currently $285, 2021 would be $314, 2022 would be $351. And a 10-inch meter size would be, is currently $705, proposed for 2021 is $706, and 2022 is $869. Also, tonight, we're going to be looking at the quarterly usage rates. The first 25,000 gallons currently is at a rate of $1.68. Proposed for 2021 would be a rate of $1.85, 2022 proposed is $2.07. The next 50,000 gallons is currently $2.22 for 2021, proposed is $244, 2022 is proposed $2.74. Over 75 gallons currently is $2.60, 2021 proposed is $286, 2022 proposed is $320. The first increase would take effect January 1, 2021. Water rates have not increased in over 25 years in the town of Yarmouth. This increase is necessary to fund needed improvements and maintenance of the town's aging drinking water infrastructure. The change to the quarterly usage rates will provide a more even cash flow for both water users and the department.
Very good, thank you, Tracy. What I'd like to do is to give Mr. Colby an opportunity to say a few words, and then we'll open it up for the public hearing part. I don't know if there's anything you want to add to what's been stated, but you have the floor.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director, also have Lori Rosala here, our Water and Wastewater Superintendent. I think what Selectmen post just read really sums up what we're looking for. This is the third time the board has had a, an opportunity to talk about these rates and meet about those. I've also put on the screen what was read, so you can see in detail the rates and how that compares. It is important to note that it's been 25 years since these rates have been adjusted, and there is a backlog, which I can provide more detail if the board would like. We talked about this at one of the previous meetings, of $38 million of improvements that are needed in the water system. And with that said, this would take effect January 1. It's something that we can effectuate in-house using the software systems we have in place, and it will provide more regular billing for the users. Right now, annual consumption billing, you get one big bill a year, that'd be spread out over four quarters, and so that would be a much more, a much lower bill to pay on a more regular basis for that usage of water. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I appreciate that, Jeff. Thank you very much. Before I ask the board, unless the board has an objection, I'd like to go to the public first to see if there are any concerns or comments by members of the public with respect to the proposal. Please, you recognize.
The sort of meter fee, I guess I would call it, it seems, you know, like such a small number...
Would you mind for the record just stating your name and...
David Morris.
Thank you.
You know, if you look at it, $5 doesn't seem like such a lot, but when you're dealing from a base of $21, that's like, doesn't that about a 25% increase? If it's, that's quite a lot. And then, I didn't quite catch what the usage, that there's an increase in the usage, whether...
Can you answer the question?
Yeah, I can, I can clarify. The current charge for most users with a smaller than one-inch meter is $21. For next year, that would be $23. That would be approximately a 10% increase, as far as what that percentage looks like. Again, the rates haven't gone up in 25 years, so this is a little bit of a catch-up to cover some of the costs. As far as the consumption going up, not only does it go to quarterly billing, but there is a higher usage fee. Just so happens that on the screen, the video box is covering most of that information. I don't know, Pat, if we can shift that over, but I can cover those numbers. Most people would be in that first 25,000 gallons, it's currently $1.68, and for next year, it'd be going up to $1.85. So that again is approximately 10%.
Thank you.
One twenty-something to...
The current charge per thousand gallons is $1.68, and in 2021, it would be $1.85.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to be recognized or heard? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. Okay, the...
I make a motion that we approve the legally advertised water rate fees, the quarterly meter fees and the quarterly usage rates, as proposed.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the next item on the agenda are the wastewater capital budget recommendations. We thought it would be helpful to break those out ahead of time, given the interest in wastewater.
DHY?
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, the DHY agreement, thank you. Sorry, my pursuit of...
I feel like just skip it if you like.
No, 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 thank you, thank you. No, we had this on for a reason.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. I also have David Young from CDM Smith, our wastewater consultant here. We have some background information for those individuals that want to know a little bit more about wastewater. This helps educate the public as well. We do have some detailed comments on the DHY agreement. It has been slightly modified since the board last saw this. There's three elements that David will cover in a couple of moments, but I just wanted to give some of this background information before we step right into the agreement. It is all one presentation that we have, but we'll pause after the DHY portion before we go on to the capital, make sure we're addressing any questions the board might have.
So are we going to be following on based on the handout, or are we going to be looking at the screen?
Well, it's my hope that you'll be able to look at the screen, but if that's not to be able to be accomplished, you do have the handout before you.
There we go, very good.
Looks like the screen will...
So for the folks at home, they can follow along with us as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
So with that said, I'll hand this over to Mr. Young to cover the first portion of the presentation. If you want to do that, do you want me to?
Good evening, David Young with CDM Smith. It's been almost a year since we had a similar discussion on DHY. Some things have gone on, so we thought we'd give you a brief update, cover the little bit of, just remind everybody, particularly the public, what's involved in the initial DHY Clean Waters Community Partnership, then get into some, three minor modifications or tweaks to the agreement that have occurred over that last year, and then get into, as Jeff said, the next steps, action items coming up, and then talk about some of your potential town meeting articles. So the Phase 1 plan that was recommended to you by the Water Resources Advisory Committee addresses nitrogen removal in all three of your main watersheds. It picks up the largest water users, which, as you'll see and as you may recall, is part of your funding cost recovery program. Serves as the main sort of spine, as we refer to it, meaning future phases will use some of the pipes that would be installed during this phase. Provides for some significant economic development along Route 28, provides for flexibility in adapting future phases as they come along, and aligns, critically important, aligns with the Mast Dot projects, so that you have the opportunity to help save money coordinating with those. So just to remember, refresh everyone's memory, the Tan area is the Phase 1, which is essentially Route 28 from the Barnstable Line all the way up to the Dennis Line and then down on South Shore Drive. So it's really picking up your mainly commercial establishments. This shows, depicts the Mast Dot, or Mast Department of Transportation projects that are proposed. They're doing from Parkers River Bridge all the way over to the Barnstable Line is one of the projects, and then more immediately, they're doing the North Main Street, Route 28 intersection, and the Bass River Bridge. So both of those, we want to make sure we're coordinated with and get the pipes that you need in the ground during that first phase into the Mast Dot projects. There's a lot of information that's been put on this website. If people have not been there, those at home, would encourage you to go to the www.dhycleanwaters.org website. Tremendous amount of information there on the partnership, and includes the special legislation, the latest copy of the draft agreement, the meeting minutes, and various presentations, the meeting minutes from the subgroup that has been meeting essentially monthly for almost three years now. This is the sewer system layout, which many of you have seen, but it combines the three towns. Again, your Phase 1 area over here, then you have to, so you're collecting that, then you have to convey it over to the treatment plant site, which would be in Dennis, at their DPW site, and then some F1 is recharged at that site, but the majority would be piped back and recharged at the Bass River Golf Course, which was the presentation we gave about a month ago here. Similarly, most of the Dennis collection is local, and they would use that site if they did it on their own, and Howard is in the process of evaluating their options, but they convey the wastewater over to the Dennis site as well. This is just a summary of the flows by community, based on what's known as the build-out, meaning what could be built and what communities have projected from their comprehensive wastewater management plans. This doesn't mean they're going to use all that capacity, certainly on day one or in the initial phases, but if you look at their either approved or filed comprehensive wastewater management plans, these are the flows that they would ultimately bring forward, and this is the percentage then of the ownership that they would have in that facility. This table and the next one, you saw just about a year ago. I think it was October 22nd when we presented this. These have not been updated yet. They will be in the first of the year, once we know roughly what the new initial flow request will be from the towns, and it will also incorporate the modifications that were recommended as part of the peer review. And since these are 2022 costs, you know, this is when we were going forward last spring, we'll be bumping these ahead at least one year, if not into 2024 cost projections. But as you can see from this, this is for the shared facilities, and just to remind everyone, if you look at the Yarmouth cost, the town-only facility for shared, meaning treatment plant and F1 recharge, was 132 million. As part of the partnership, it'd be 116, but your real savings is in the operation and maintenance cost, the 8.9 on your own versus the 4.8. So that's really the focus of where your savings is. And how does that one point, or your cost breakdown, believe me, those numbers add up on the bottom, but the breakdown is the collection system. It costs you a little bit more because you have to convey to Dennis, but your big savings is in the treatment plant. That's where you make that up, but more importantly, your cost savings are in the, over in operating and maintaining that treatment plant. That's okay, Pat. This is just a brief summary of the cost methods that you have proposed as part of your cost recovery plan. You successfully passed at least the first part of implementing your water infrastructure investment fund at your town meeting a couple of weeks ago. Passed the 0.78% on the property tax as a surcharge, very similar to what your CPA is, and you did the corresponding article on CPA for that 100,000 exemption. You're also part of the Cape and Island Water Protection Trust Fund, which is dovetailed in with the state revolving loan fund, and they just adopted the regulations as to how to implement and distribute the money as part of that. I know a couple of you here are on that trust fund committee and were involved in those regulations, but you've also, as I mentioned, looked at flow-based betterment program, 25% potential surcharge on the water rates, dedicated potential short-term revenues, and some other potential revenue streams. So as has been part of the discussion, you have multiple means of paying for this program with the goal of trying not to directly hit the overall general tax rate. So where is the DHY agreement? Again, to refresh everyone's memory, this agreement has been evolving for the last couple of years at least. It needs to go to a town meeting and be approved by each of those communities who are participating. Right now, it's envisioned that all three communities would be participating, so it would need to pass a town meeting and be adopted at each community's town meeting. The latest draft of that agreement is again posted on the DHY website. There are links to each of the towns' webs, from each of the towns' websites to that DHY website as well, I believe, and we're looking to work with each of the communities to make sure all the websites are up to date with the latest information, because realizing over the last few months, some of it has fallen behind. I'll cover in a minute, but the three things that have changed over the last year, the addition of a land use agreement requirement, some tweaking of wording in the procurement for professional services, and some tweaking of the wording in the final budget approval process for the DHY commission. The Dennis Selectmen are planning to reaffirm their prior December 2019 vote, which supported joining the DHY Clean Waters Partnership. The Howard Selectmen have scheduled multiple meetings in December to discuss their revised sewer phasing plan, to figure out which areas to bring over first, because they're looking at some different planning initiatives in the community, and they may not do their next phase, which was up in East Howard, in order to bring wastewater over to the DHY partnership if they're going to invest in capacity there. And all costs will be updated, as I indicated, in early 2021 to reflect the latest initial flow projections, the peer review comments, and the updated construction schedules. So what has changed? This paragraph was actually added into the agreement. I believe it was a comment that came from Yarmouth, particularly in regard to, you know, what would Yarmouth say be in use of the Bass River Golf Course? So this is the direct wording out of the agreement, which requires the commission to develop either a memorandum of understanding or an intermunicipal agreement or something similar. The legal folks who have reviewed this agreement wanted to make sure it was kept open, instead of just saying it was a memorandum of understanding type of thing, and it would address the issues that have been raised, such as, you know, construction would need to make sure it also addressed any projected lost revenues during the construction phase. It would address schedule for construction in order to minimize cost and neighborhood impacts. It would also address the routing of construction vehicles, time of operation, when construction could actually take place, and any other specific land use issues that the community may have, and that agreement would be signed between the community's Board of Selectmen and the DHY commissioners. So yes, this relates and was put in for initially being at Bass River, but if you look further down the road, similar instances would be developed for use of the Dennis Pines and Dennis Highlands Golf Courses, which are projected further out for use there, and potentially even with use of the F1 recharge site, which is the second site, main site, to be used in Howard at their DPW site. So this agreement, I think, is good. It lays out sort of the ground rules of how things would be done, particularly during construction, and even further, you know, the example of, you know, certainly Yarmouth would want to maintain all ownership and operations of the golf course aspects, and, you know, the DHY partnership, they just want to be able to put the F1 recharge in the leaching fields below grade. Seems rather simple, but it's always good to put it down in writing. The second item that was added was to clarify some of the procurement of professional services going forward. This used to have three paragraphs, 14.1, 2, and 3. It's now been shrunk to just two. 14.1 and 14.3 were combined, and now really just addresses that the last paragraph, or the last sentence was the key wording requested by some representatives in Howard, and that is, it's the general policy of the commission, that procurement for goods, professional services, or construction contractors shall be done in a competitive manner to the maximum extent possible. Obviously, the first part, they have the commissioners who need to do any procurement according to Massachusetts procurement laws, sort of goes without saying, but again, it's good to put it in writing, just so everyone's aware. And the third item has to do with the budget process. This slide is very similar to the one we showed you about a year ago. The one bullet that changed is really the last bullet. Previously, the commission would need to have adopted, well, let me start from the beginning, just to review everyone's, refresh everyone's memory. On November 1 of the beginning of the next fiscal year, so November 1, any year, the commission would need to issue a draft budget for the next coming fiscal year, and it would be distributed to the three communities, and that draft budget would need to be approved by the commissioners on a majority vote. They would distribute that, then the commission would go out to the communities, as requested by either the Selectmen or the finance committees or whoever, and present the budget, discuss it with them, get feedback during November and December. The commission... The commission and member towns would then conduct a three-town board of selectmen meeting to approve that draft budget by majority vote of those selectmen present at that meeting. Quorum at that meeting requires at least two selectmen from each community and a minimum of at least eight selectmen in total to be at the meeting. Hopefully, the the selectmen would approve it at that time. And if they did, then by January 15th, the commission would go back, look at that budget, and would require sort of a supermajority, but would require five of the seven commissioners to vote to adopt that commission budget, taking any input or additional comments from the selectmen into account, and then would issue that out to each of the three town treasurers by February 1st. If for some reason, the selectmen at their three-town meeting did not approve the budget, the commissioners would need to either revise the budget or enter negotiations with them as to try to come up with one. But ultimately, if there was no affirmative vote from the selectmen prior to March 1st, then the commissioners and the selectmen would need to go through a dispute resolution process to ultimately resolve that budget. And in the interim, the prior year's fiscal budget would be implemented and go forward until a positive vote was received. So that's really the key is that last part, is that instead of just the commissioners moving forward and taking into account the input they received, we actually have to have ultimately a positive vote from the three-town selectmen. So where are we in time here? Again, special legislation for this, which allows the three towns to move forward, create the partnership, was approved by the legislature, signed by the governor back in October 2019. There was a three-town board of selectmen meeting last February that heard the results and discussions of the peer review findings done by the group Weston and Sampson. The DHY subgroup meetings have continued monthly, been meeting virtually since March. In the agreement, any final revisions, which those three I just reviewed with you, have all been approved. No changes have been made to the agreement without the approval of the subgroup. So that is their most recent, and they believe final, ready to go to a town meeting vote edition. The selectmen in each town are to vote and endorse the DHY agreement by the end of 2020, or at least let the other communities know where they are in terms of joining the partnership. And the goal of that is that then all three can have the same messaging going forward to next spring's town meeting and doing the same education to their residents from January to the town meeting. The communities would then hold those, as I indicated, information meetings leading to the April, May 2021 town meetings in each community. And again, the agreement must be passed in all three towns as currently written. Should the agreement be endorsed and passed by all three towns, then in June, July, the DHY agreement would be finalized and signed by the three-town boards of selectmen. Similarly, each community would need to submit a final comprehensive wastewater management plan, in the case of Dennis, or a what's known as a notice of project change for the towns of Yarmouth and Howard, since you both already have approved comprehensive wastewater management plans. And that would be filed with the Mass Environmental Policy Office for Massachusetts or and/or in with the Cape Cod Commission. Similarly, the three towns would appoint their DHY commissioners so that the commissioners could get up and running, so to speak. They would likely, one of their first acts, select a part-time executive director to sort of start doing the day-to-day operations of the partnership. And each town then would also need to confirm how much initial flow capacity they would like in the treatment plant so that the commission can move forward for planning purposes and start to move into the design phase, which would be about a two-year design period, followed by three years of construction and ultimately sewer connections within the three towns. I realize this is a little bit busy for you all to see here, but been working with Jeff and some of the other folks in Dennis and Howard to try to dovetail in your town meeting actions, filing with the state revolving fund folks, looking at design periods, looking at the Mass Department of Environmental Transportation project schedules. So across the top is Yarmouth projects, blue being design, red being bidding, green being the construction periods, and then followed by Howard, Dennis, DHY, and Mastard, so that you can see the different projects that would be going on and when they would occur, ultimately leading out to the 2026, when the treatment plant would actually receive its first wastewater and would start treating that. So as we sit here today, we're not even in 2021 yet, we're getting closer, which is a good thing, I think. But to receive the first gallon of wastewater and treat it, we're talking 2026. So with that, we'll take a pause and be happy to answer any questions on what we just reviewed in the DHY.
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just to wrap up, as you heard in one of David's slides, we're really building towards endorsement from the board of selectmen on this agreement. So what we want to get tonight is any other information that you might need in order to help that support. We just want to make sure that that's that's clear. Should have also mentioned, we have several members of the Water Resource Advisory Committee in the audience tonight that might be able to to comment if you have any questions of them. Thank you.
Jeff, let's go around for the to the board for sort of first initial round of questions. I'm going to start with Dan Horgan. Dan?
You may have you may have covered this in prior meetings that I wasn't a part of, but has any thought been given to placing an additional conduit when the DOT does their work in the ground, just in the event in future years, we decide to put some of the electrical wires or other types of utilities underground?
It's something that we could certainly look at during that design process. We do have significant utility coordination meetings that happen. We are looking, as I should mention to the board, to also upgrade the water, which the town owns as well in Route 28, but all throughout the entire project. As we add wastewater lines, we're also looking to, if needed, upgrade the water lines as well. So we're looking at all the utilities. It is more involved than just adding conduit because of the need for transformers and other electrical components, but it's certainly something we'll take a look at. When we've taken a look at other areas of town for significant utility improvements, we have looked at electrical. We found that to be very expensive, but it's something we can certainly take a look at during the design process.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Dan?
Can you, Dave, tell us a little bit about what's going on in Howard?
Yeah. Howard has been working the last two years on putting sewers in in the East Howard area, which is part of the Pleasant Bay watershed. That was their recommended phase two. Phase one was to do the Muddy Creek Bridge and restore the Coldbrook, former Cranbury Bog area on Bank Street, back to natural state to naturally remove nitrogen. So phase two was to put some sewers in in East Howard, and phase three was to do another area of East Howard. They're in the process of evaluating where might they sewer. It's one of the other phases in Howard, instead of doing that phase three. So switching their phasing around so that should they become member or part of the DHY partnership, you know, and they buy in initial capacity at the treatment plant, they're actually sending wastewater there. Their phasing plan that they had approved didn't really address areas that were close to the Dennis side for three or four phases out. So they're in the process of doing that and then re-educating themselves on their cost savings, which are significant for joining DHY. So that those meetings are occurring this month, now that we're in December.
All right. On the costs, I remember earlier some talk of the savings that we incur because of the regional nature of the project, somewhere between 20 and 40 million. Is that incorporated in these infrastructure costs and savings that you've delineated here, or is that in addition to?
No, those cost tables I showed, that was for the shared cost, which shows that you pay a little bit more for your conveyance because you have to send your wastewater over to Dennis, but that is more than offset by your savings in the treatment plant because it's the economy of scale. But your biggest savings is in sharing the operation and maintenance of the treatment plant, which is the most costly aspect component to any of the three communities. So if you can do it jointly, that's where your real savings are.
I think what I'm trying to get at is the savings that you've shown on your chart here, do they incorporate the types of interest, the favorable rate of interest that we might receive by doing this in a regional way?
These are just strictly capital costs, right?
Okay, so that's in addition to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but you lined up to meet the five criteria to get a zero-interest loan.
Right. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mike, Mr. Stone?
First of all, thanks for the update. It was really good to pull everything together and review what's been accomplished and what remains to be done. I'm glad there's some recognition in Section 3.3 that we're talking about project loss revenues, but I'm not, I can't say I'm absolutely thrilled about that language, is it it's a bit awkward, any project loss revenues during construction? I would like it, if possible, to say including but not limited to lost revenues resulting from recharge sites or words to that effect. But again, this is an improvement. I'm glad to see some kind of language that talks about lost revenues. I just don't know what any project loss revenues during construction means. It's it's more than general. I think it's a little bit vague. I think that's what's kind of bothering me a little bit. That would be subject to interpretation, I think. I think it lacks clarity. I would like something, if possible, I understand you have to get the accord of the other towns on this, and you can't just unilaterally dictate terms to them. But I would assume Dennis is going to have a similar concern when they're talking about their golf course as well, so.
Yeah, there are a lot of items that have been discussed in that, and, you know, they haven't all been listed, you know, such as sharing of staff, potential sharing of memberships, you know, a lot of things could be done. And so the advice that's been given to us to date was to keep it more general. And each agreement will then get into the specifics with the specific dates, you know, defining what the revenues are, giving a history of maybe the last three years of revenue so that communities know, you know, all those specifics would then go into that agreement.
I don't have a problem with the generality of the language, and I can see why you're coming from that direction. It kind of by definition has to be somewhat open-ended, but it's more that I think there should be some clarity that the lost revenues resulting from areas used as recharge areas is part of the project costs that get apportioned. I could see an argument occurring as to what, quote, "any project lost revenues during construction" means. Does that does that mean a loss from something that was already in existence prior to the commencement of construction, for example? If that's the case, you're you're in deep weeds there. So.
Well, maybe that's an item we talk about collectively as a board in terms of how we might want to proceed with that.
So I think, again, this is this is an improvement and but I and I think you, you know, you're moving in the right direction. And I understand it has to be kept general, but I believe it's a little bit vague.
You've provided some great comments in the past as part of the subgroup. If you'd like to propose something and give it to Mark, who's on your subgroup?
Okay.
Or Dan? Feel free.
Okay. The other thing I will say, and it's a little bit of a departure from this, but it's relevant to the the presentation. As you know, the articles that we just recently had approved, wastewater articles have the couple of them have to go to the ballot. And, you know, especially in this environment, we didn't we didn't get a great number of people at town meeting, but I don't think that's necessarily negatively reflects on wastewater. I think it's probably COVID, and and that could occur too at the ballot. We don't know what's going to, what the situation is going to be by then. But I think there's going to, it's it's going to be important. There's a big educational piece that has to be addressed between now and the ballot so that people know exactly what the town's proposing, that, you know, I don't think the average citizen follows this thing as closely as as we do and tunes in and gets these updates from time to time. So I think it's got to be kind of similar to what occurred here tonight, like an overview, but even going back a little bit more in terms of the the origination of the problem, you know, what the nitrogen levels are in the three major areas that we're trying to address here, economic opportunities, those kinds of things, and try to try to stress the need for people to come out and support this. I because I don't think town meeting gets me too excited without that ballot vote. That's what I'm going to know where we stand on this. So those are my initial comments. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Tracy?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. You know, there's two things. Well, obviously, you know, it goes back to you, the subcommittee has worked well, working through all the issues. I mean, I don't really have any issues with the substance of the document at this point. They've taken they've taken it in and made a lot of really great corrections or adjustments along the way. So as far as that goes, you know, I'm happy. However, I have I guess I have pause with not knowing Howard's future and what that really could mean to us with that percentage. If if Howard goes in a different direction, what do you think would happen at that point in time in terms of the plant, the plan itself? Is it viable with a two-town? Where does those costs get transferred to?
There's been discussions, and that's one of the reasons, not only for the education piece, but so that the communities know where everyone stands. The subgroup has made it very clear to each of the town representatives that they need to actually take a vote. that they need to actually take a vote of their board of selectmen by the end of the year so that the other two towns will know what that town has voted. So they come the beginning of the year, if they're all supportive and want to join, granted, you never know till you have a town meeting vote. The education piece, which is clearly needed, can be done by all three and send the same message. If only two decide to join and one doesn't, then decisions need to be made as to whether you modify the agreement and bring a two-town agreement forward to your town meetings if you were looking to join a partnership. The cost savings, if it's Dennis and Yarmouth, is essentially the same as it is with the three because Harwich is such a small piece. The difference is that Harwich brings another third independent voice to the table whenever there are discussions going on. And I can tell you from the Mansfield, Foxborough, Norton, MFN discussions, that having that third party was important, but now that they've been up and running, there's barely any discussion. The commissioners have almost been all unanimous votes. So I think to get to your question of what does it mean cost-wise to the town of Yarmouth, the cost savings are almost very close to being the same as they are now because Harwich is only 15%. And when you split that by 55% and 30%, you know, there isn't a whole lot of change.
Well, imagine there'd be some reduction in the, in the overall building costs in terms of the, what, you know, what, you know, we reduce the gallons required? Or would you build it at the same?
No, you would build it for what the capacity is that Yarmouth wants and Dennis wants. So yes, you'd likely build a slightly smaller treatment plant, 15% less or whatever it may be. And then that operation and maintenance cost would again be split, but because you don't have as big a number, it's not quite a reduction. Well, there's some reduction, but not significant.
So I guess I'm just trying to play it out in my head how it would work is, and, and I have no idea what Harwich is doing. I'm just speculating. If they did go in a different direction, they would let us know by the end of this year and then we would have to replan the document. So would we still be looking at April or May of this year for that, you think? Or would it be further off?
Well, those are things we could still look at. Certainly, we've been doing some contingency planning or whether, you know, we go forward with this style agreement or whether it's just an IMA between two communities. Those are all things we've had discussions with town council about and, and town staff has been looking at. So those are considerations we certainly can take a look at. And to, you know, answer your question previously, you know, the size of the plant is based upon the flow commitments and all of the information you've seen tonight is just preliminary estimates. There is some discussion that if Harwich does join and their representatives indicate that, that, you know, seems to be the case, but they need to take an official vote of, of their board to, you know, clear that up. They might be looking at something that might be closer to 10% flow versus 15. So, you know, their percentage might diminish even if they continue to be part of that partnership. So that's just worth noting.
Okay. I mean, I guess I'm with Mike. It, it's hard for timing-wise because we're not going to know. We're going to go to another town meeting yet again without having the sentiment really of the community, which brings me to my next pause with our relationship with Dennis and how the community really feels about. We, I know we talked sometime back about having a public meeting of sorts. I guess, you know, for me to jump in with two feet, I would really like to hear how the public feels about us venturing further into that relationship. I mean, there's a significant amount of money on the line, but, you know, hearing what he's saying too about a potential two-town and an IMA where, you know, perhaps it would be our plant would, I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm a little bit hesitant without hearing from the public and time gets away from us. I know we're really busy, but I think it's extremely important that we do hear from the public and that we follow the wishes of the general public. Ultimately, they'll have a say at town meeting. But I, I think this is a, a very big deal. This is, this is as, as big as our school district and a, a long-term commitment. And I think that the, the people should weigh in on that as, to the extent possible because once this goes through, that, that will be it. We would be married for a very long time. There are a lot of great benefits to that. I'm not saying there isn't. There, there's, there certainly is, but there are other things to consider as well. And I want to make sure that I'm following what the will of the people is. That's my comments.
Thank you, Tracy. Eric.
Thank you. Thank you, David and Jeff, for the presentation. I too share the concerns about Harwich. But that's not to say that it doesn't apply to any town because what happens if this goes to town meeting next spring and one, two, or three towns don't vote to support, to support it? What, what then? Are we starting over? You know, if, if two towns approve it, one doesn't, we can scale back the plan? If no towns approve the, this, then we'd obviously have to look at it on our own. What does that scenario look like? What does a doomsday scenario look like?
2020.
I'm not sure.
2026.
We've been, yeah, we've been living through the 2020 doomsday. But, you know, we have been, continue our planning in parallel with the Yarmouth-only solution. In fact, in many of our presentations, you've probably heard us continue to talk about that. We have cost estimates associated with that. We have plans that have been previously designed and haven't been advanced any further, but do have a Yarmouth-only solution. So I think the, the short answer to your question is we do have a backup plan. And that is the Yarmouth-only solution. And we've continued to update costs and, you know, continue the planning where that is a potential possibility because we need, we know we need to do something and we have a backup plan.
Yeah, just if I might add, your collection system that we showed and the different phases, you have to build that whether you're doing Yarmouth only or you're joining the DHY partnership. It's a matter of, once it reaches the pumping station, where are we pumping to? Are we pumping to the treatment plant in Dennis or are we pumping to a treatment plant in Yarmouth?
Where is a treatment plant in Yarmouth?
It would be proposed for the Buck Island roadside.
DHY agreement. Project, any, any project lost revenues during construction? We've been talking about the Gulf revenues that will be lost at Bass River for at least one season for quite some time now. And I seem to recall some mention of the idea being floated to Dennis and Harwich. Can you remind me if, if that was ever floated and, and how it was received?
Yes, the, the costs for installing the.
The, the revenue, the Gulf revenues that will be lost while the Gulf course is closed.
That has been discussed at multiple subgroup meetings. They're all in agreement that that needs to be part of the project cost for putting the leaching facilities in at Bass River. There's been almost no discussion, questions about sharing those lost revenues. We're still waiting to hear what sort of those lost revenues are, but the policy to do that hasn't even been up for debate.
It hasn't.
Yeah.
All right. A couple of questions about slides number nine and 10, just to help me understand them a little bit. Slide number nine is shared infrastructure costs and savings. And in that slide, first of all, you know, there's an asterisk at the bottom, 30-year loan at 2% interest. Are 0% interest loans a thing of the past?
No, we were just being conservative and it was just taking the capital cost, spreading that for 20-year period at 2% interest and adding in the O and M to create the equivalent annual cost. Very simplistic way of doing it, but gave a simplified means of showing how you equate O and M costs versus capital.
And I would also add that I think with the DHY arrangement, the three-town arrangement, the 0% looks even more attractive for us to get that. And in addition, loan forgiveness or debt forgiveness is a part of the equation as well. But does, isn't reflected in these numbers.
And, and the slide number nine, in the upper left-hand corner, you know, there's several items. Shared conveyance, wastewater treatment, I don't know what the F stands for, but I certain that's the plant facility. Ethylene recharge. And that looks like, if we go to the, to the lower right-hand corner, it looks like an annual savings of about $10 million. But it looks like all of these same line items are then plugged into slide number 10, except they're itemized individually. And if we go to the equivalent annual costs, that's only a difference of about, a savings of 1.2 million. So these types of things aren't, don't necessarily come easy to me. So I'm wondering, what is the difference between the $10 million annual savings in slide number nine and the 1.2 million dollar annual savings in one, slide number 10, when all the line items seem to be the same?
I think one's phase, the bottom is just phase one. And that's over the, the top one is probably over the course of the whole project.
The, the top table is over the build-out flow numbers and the bottom is just your phase one cost summary.
So the infrastructure costs, there'll be 10 million.
Coincidence that the shared cost of Yarmouth being 132 and your phase one cost, which is sewers, your share of the treatment plant and the others, also added up to 132. Those are two different sets of numbers.
Okay. Because to your point, it looked like they were almost the same thing.
There were a couple of tables in between these that I chose to weed out tonight to simplify it.
Okay, fair enough. You know, I, Tracy kind of stole my thought. I, I do have concerns over partnerships, any partnership. And my, my concerns are even greater given that one of our potential partners is not one that, that we have always played nice with in the past. So, you know, that, that does concern me. And that's all I'll say because I don't want to be quoted in the paper. I have concerns about partnerships in general. Thank you.
Very good. Before we go any further, I know Kurt Sears is in the audience. Kurt, as chairman of the Water Resources Advisory Committee, is there anything that you would like to state or add or a question that you might would like, might like to comment on?
Thanks. You know, I, I think at this point, we should continue to move forward in whichever form it's going to be. This has just gone on way too long. Excuse me, hours that are countless have been put in by so many people to get us here. And we've got to stop tripping over ourselves and finding reasons not to do this. So I think if we at least make the commitment to go on our own if necessary, that's fine. But if we can stop worrying about hurt feelings on everybody's part and just see if we can get this together, we'd be better off because my experience, and I think the other people that have sat in the various committees, we've all got along very well and we've had our issues and we've worked them through. It's not like people pointing fingers at each other at this point in this process and blaming each other for the fact that one town may have asked for something. You know, we didn't see hurt feelings and it said, you know, good point, let's see if we can work through it. So I think we need to keep going in that spirit and see if we can, you know, if I may, get this in place.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to just make a few comments. First, I want to thank you for the, the update and the presentation. So before us, we have the task of having to develop a recommendation on this and make a decision to endorse the agreement or not before the end of the year. When I look at the calendar, our next, the only other meeting that we have in December is the 15th. And, you know, I, I want to pursue a little bit Tracy's observations about having an opportunity for the public to provide some input ahead of time. And is, is it the boards, is the board comfortable with us holding a public hearing or public forum? Some way to gauge some type of public interest in this? Perhaps at our next meeting? And then the board can take it up then? Let me just put that out there just to sort of try to bring this, to wrap this discussion up. Any comments, thoughts? Dan?
I think that's a good idea. It obviously isn't going to give us the kind of exposure that we want to get across the town, but it gives at least an opportunity for people in the town to either join via Zoom or to come in or to write letters or emails to us to let us know how they feel about this particular agreement. And it gives the board members a couple of weeks to mull over the information one more time before we come to a, ahead and need to make a recommendation on the 15th.
Okay. Mike?
I'm always in favor of public input, no matter what the issue is. The, the obvious constraints here are the, the fact that we only have one more meeting this month and also it's the holidays and I don't know how busy people are going to be, but I'd be willing to give it a try. If not at that night, at some other night this month, that's convenient for everybody. It might be better to do that to, to separate it out from the, from the regular meeting. And I know, again, it's, it's, it's going to be tough from a scheduling standpoint, but whatever will bring the most input in is, is I think what we should be looking to try to accomplish.
Okay. Thank you. Eric? Any comments on?
What was the question?
Well, the question is about getting public input and public feedback on the DHY agreement and maybe trying to hold some forum. I think if we're looking for people to actually, if, for it to be convenient for people to express themselves, that, that probably forum would best be, I think, virtual or a Zoom-type meeting. Wouldn't you agree?
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to, if we as a board want to make ourselves accessible to the public at large, I think that would be the format of, of a public session. But again, I'm, I'm just trying to move this discussion along and I'm very sensitive to what Tracy has said. So let's give another opportunity for the public to weigh in. That's sort of the proposal and to do that before we as a board vote. If the board's interested in having two meetings in December, that's fine with me.
Well, can we have just a Zoom meeting just for this particular topic and nothing else? And then just put the vote on our next meeting?
We could do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, if, if, I'm, I'm looking at the December 15th meeting and, you know, we've got the drive-in, spring ATM articles and budget presentation. So that's a full night. And if we're going to schedule an additional meeting to get public input here in the 11th hour, then, you know, I think that would be most useful as a Zoom meeting for all. Because what are you going to get, a dozen people in this room? And if they don't want to be here, then I can be somewhere else too. We can all be on Zoom. But, you know, I would like the topic for that discussion to be the two options. The regional option and the Yarmouth option. Because I personally feel from discussions I've had that you will find a considerable number of people that want Yarmouth to be in charge of its own destiny. And I share that sentiment, always have. So, sure, if we have to do that, then.
I think that's where my struggle is. I, I share that sentiment as well, but I don't think we can overlook the savings. I mean, I think that that, it's, it's a tough pass. Regardless of my personal feelings. I mean, I know how we all probably feel and what we've, we've experienced here, but it's not, it's, I mean, that's a lot of money to pass up. So, I mean, ultimately, who knows who will show up or if anybody? And it's going to go to town meeting. Does, does it go to a ballot after town meeting if this is passed? So that's it. Yeah, I mean, obviously, it, people, people should reach out. And, you know, it's funny because when the sewers issue was the last time, I had a lot of people reach out. We had a lot of people calling. Now, this is a lot of years ago, a lot has passed, a lot of education has been done. I don't think that the town feels the same way that it did then, especially with the tax-neutral program that we're putting together. It makes it a little bit easier. But I really haven't heard from anybody on this, very few people. So. But I really haven't heard from anybody on this, very few people, so, um-
I think that, you know, in general, people are paying less attention because it's not entirely on the tax base like it was before.
Right. I agree.
This is going to have less of an impact, less effect on the average person and their, and their, and their, and their household budget.
But people need to know, but tha- that's just our plan for phase one.
Right.
This, this is going to be in place for all of the phases going forward for many, many years. And that may not, we, we may not be sitting here with that same, uh, policy. We may not, I mean, they may have to tax for it. I don't, I don't know what the future could hold. There's a lot of phases in this. We're only talking about phase one and I, I agree, if it doesn't hit your wallet, you're not as apt to participate. But that does not mean that in the future, it's not going to hit your wallet.
No, I hear what you're saying. So the question before us will be, um, you know, what dates do we ultimately choose? Um, does anybody want to recommend a date this month to hold a special forum? Um, we can discuss it.
Do we use one of the other Tu- Tuesdays?
Uh, we have, well, the Tuesday the eighth might be a little bit too soon.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, the 22nd, well, that's, you think, it's right before the Christmas holiday. That might be a bit of a trick. Um-
Well, so, I think we have to do it before our next meeting because if we don't, then we're faced with either taking a vote that night or scheduling another meeting in order to vote on it before the end of the year.
Sure. The other option might be, instead of picking a Tuesday, picking a Thursday.
I was going to say, what about the 10th?
Does anybody have any objections to trying to hold a special forum on the 10th and do a fairly robust appeal to the public?
Zoom, yeah. Zoom for everybody, right?
Yes, it'll be Zoom, uh, that's what we're talking about, Zoom. By Zoom, virtual, we'll do some outreach to encourage people to participate by Zoom. Does, does anybody have an objection to doing that on the 10th?
We have a, what, we were thinking of a DPW Building Committee meeting, Mark. Uh, Jeff, what time were you thinking that was going to be?
Well, we've done those both at four and at six, so if this happens at six o'clock, irregular hour, we could maybe try to do that at four. Um, so we could try to fit both in if need be.
How long do you think that meeting is going to take?
That should be quick. That, the DPW building meeting will be quick.
Because I have a, I know I emailed and said the 10th would work, but then I looked at my calendar and I have a four o'clock appointment. Um, not that I want to schedule it around that. Let's, let's, I'm fine with the 10th.
Move forward with the 10th?
Yeah.
Let's do that and I'll talk to Dan and the team and see if we can, uh, gin up an effort to get public awareness and get people to participate. Okay?
Yeah. And I mean, I would just like to put out, you know, a, a request to the public, um, if you haven't been paying attention to this and, and you, and you're not familiar with all the nuances and the numbers, at least please email us and, and, and let us know, um, what your thoughts are on a regional approach or, or a Yarmouth alone approach because that's going to be the vote. And, you know, the, the numbers are significantly different. Um, it will cost more for a Yarmouth-only option, but, um, can't put a price on stress-free life.
Well, let me, let me just say, then, I think we've got some direction here, which is very, very good. Let me just say, I've, I've participated since I've been on the board in all of these sort of subgroup meetings and, um, you know, I know there was, there's a past, but I, in my discussions, in my deliberations, uh, with a, a number of Dennis and Harwich participants, they've all, they've all been very productive. And with respect to the language that you and Mike had referenced, um, we all know what that language means. We're talking about losing revenues associated with interruptions in operations. And I can tell you that the representations have all, from all the other communities have been very, very supportive and very much aware of what we're talking about. There's been no ambiguity. And, uh, I have no hesitation about speaking about how positive those discussions have been. So, um, my interactions have all been positive. My interactions, uh, for the three-plus years that I've been doing this have all been good. Um, I think a lot of it comes down to what both of you have said about saving money, finding a way to do this project in a way that best positions us to get the most help and best positions us to keep the costs, uh, as low as possible for our residents, for our taxpayers. And I think if there's one thing that we all share, we certainly share that. Um, now, might there be some bumps in the road? There probably will be, but I think there's very good faith, at least among the selectmen working on this. And, uh, I, I've, I've certainly, um, seen nothing but cooperation and support. So, um, I can, I can just share with you the spirit of collaboration and cooperation that has existed in all of our meetings. And, uh, so I, I understand the past, but the present and looking ahead has certainly been a, a very different situation for me. David, did you want to comment on something?
Sort of just one closing thought, uh, I know it's 2020, but, um, in doing the Mansfield, Foxborough, Norton wastewater district, it took us a year to get the three towns to come to the table because the three towns did not work together at all. Wouldn't even talk to one another. We finally got them to the table. After two and a half years, got the agreement, legislation passed, it went into effect in 2014. It has been purring like a kitten ever since then. And in fact, the three towns now are doing other things together regionally. They're doing police fire dispatch, they're doing procurements, they're doing other things because they've seen the benefit of working together. But believe me, I understand every community, there's reason there's 351 towns in Massachusetts. They're all unique. But I just wanted to leave you with that example that we can point to. Happy to have any of you contact the folks up there.
We heard, they have-
And they've already been down here and I think told that story.
Right.
So I'll just leave it with that.
I appreciate that. You know, when I was at my first managers, when I was in Provincetown, we had fistfights, literally, in, in, in our first couple of meetings.
Did you win?
I, I wasn't involved, but I was certainly surprised that they broke out. So I've been in communities where the relations have been certainly much different than what we're used to seeing here. So, um, in any event, thank you. Thank you for this, uh, update, this briefing. Um, I know we have the next item on the agenda, which is the, uh, the wastewater capital budget items, so are we prepared to go directly into those items?
Absolutely. So this has been a great discussion, uh, Mr. Chair. If we're ready to move on, I'll, I'll make the capital piece a much briefer, uh, discussion, but I did want to, uh, have some, uh, update for the board on that. It is, do you have that one available? It's just the last two or three slides.
Back here when we start this process.
So the, we've had some good success in the last couple of town meetings with approval of wastewater planning and design funds. Uh, just as a recap, as, uh, Pat gets the, uh, presentation on the screen, uh, in June, we had a borrowing authorization for $5.2 million, which, uh, covers many of the things we're going to talk about tonight that's in this, uh, capital request. Uh, this capital request is, is, uh, just to keep everything completely transparent as to what's being, uh, planned for in the very near term and-
Excuse me one second, Jeff. Are the items that you're speaking to in this memo that we have here or?
They're not. When Pat pulls up the presentation, there's really only two or three slides.
It's not like we have a piece of paper here that has what you're speaking to. Because we're all looking, we're all, we're all looking for paper. So as soon as Pat gets it up there, okay.
I'm, I'm filling time here a little bit.
Okay, keep going. Go ahead.
And in, in filling time, I just wanted to cover the last two town meetings where we did have some good wastewater, uh, funding that was approved. Uh, one was a borrowing authorization and that was to help us line up some of the work with Mass DOT and, uh, being able to actually, uh, commit to putting pipe in the ground as part of two projects, the, the Four Corners Project at Route 28, at North Main Street and Old Main Street, and the Bass River Bridge Project, uh, as well as, um, uh, the, um, other work that's being anticipated along Route 28. So that was a very important, uh, piece in June. Uh, and then just, uh, last month, we did have money that was approved for, uh, some design as well as, uh, survey work along Route 28 as well. Um, so that's where I will hopefully be able to transition to a map in the very near future.
Does it like your, um-
Your flash drive?
Okay.
If that drive isn't saying hi, there's a problem with the drive. Scan the drive now and fix it.
Okay. No problem at all. Uh, it is, it, it is in your handout on, um, slide number 20, if you'd like to take a look at that. Um, and we can walk through that.
Okay.
This is just also-
Slide number 20. Thank you.
Slide number 20 in your handout.
Okay.
So this will, uh, we anticipate, uh, town meeting articles for the DHY community partnership. That is the DHY agreement, so that's the first bullet on that slide. Uh, the second bullet is, uh, at this point, we have a, um, estimate for $3 million to fund the remainder of Phase One survey and design, uh, for the collection and conveyance system. Uh, this, uh, will be used for the collection system, so this is not, uh, design associated with the treatment plant or any of those, uh, types of DHY costs. This is collection system associated with Yarmouth costs. Uh, so it's important to, to note that. I know we've had a great discussion tonight about, uh, joining DHY or the potential go it alone Yarmouth solution, but these funds will be needed for design and survey work associated with the collection system. And it was also referenced earlier tonight that in 2011, uh, there was a, uh, article before town meeting in the ballot to approve construction dollars for, uh, Phase One, which at that time was Route 28 from the Parker's River Bridge to the Barnstable Town Line. So that's at the 90% design stage. So the, the funds that we're looking for, uh, for the next phase would be from Parker's River Bridge to Dennis, which has not been designed yet. Uh, survey work, uh, or the funding for the survey work was approved at last month's town meeting, but the design work, uh, needs to happen. Uh, also, I would, uh, have you turn over your handout to page 21 to take a look at the rest of Phase One, uh, and kind of walk you through that. So we've been talking about sections along Route 28 to, uh, coordinate with Mass DOT work, but you'll, you'll see in that brown section or the tan section for Phase One, there still is Old Main Street, some of the roads off of that. Uh, there is also South Shore Drive, and so there is survey and design work that's needed as part of that as well. So that makes up that, uh, part of that ask for the design funds. Also, uh, on slide 20, uh, one of the other bullets was the notice of project change. You heard, uh, Dave Young talk about that and that is needed because we do have an approved wastewater master plan, but we need to update that, uh, not just to add DHY, but also to add the Bass River, uh, watershed component to that as well. So that will be needed in any case. Uh, as well as continued water quality sampling and monitoring, we've got a program working closely with, uh, Division of Natural Resources, uh, in doing some sampling, particularly on our three, uh, embayments of Lewis Bay, Parker's River, Bass River watershed. Also, the Friends of Bass River has done some additional sampling there as well, but we want to continue the, uh, funding associated with the water sampling to demonstrate our, uh, program is working and make any changes as necessary. So that water sampling is a very important component as well as public outreach. So those are the primary components associated with that $3 million, uh, ask, uh, that will be anticipating for town meeting.
So those, those figures, excuse me, Jeff, are within the $3 million number?
Exactly.
Those are all included in that?
That is, that is correct. Uh, so the other, uh, components you have, uh, on slide 22 just shows the overall DHY sewer system. Um, excellent. So what I previously mentioned was that this section from Parker's River Bridge to the Bass River Bridge is what still needs to be designed. So that's a primary component of that, uh, $3 million ask. And that's not just Route 28, but that is also Old Main Street, which is right here, as well as South Shore there. So you can see that visually. Uh, there are some connecting streets in, through this brown area as well, so there's components associated with that. So that's what that looks like. But what I was just about to say was the DHY system, we are responsible for our own collection system, but also the system to transport, uh, that wastewater to, uh, the DHY treatment area. So, uh, also survey and design associated with the $3 million will be part of that component for DHY. But obviously, we wouldn't be moving on that unless there was clear direction from the board and, and town meeting that we are actually going forward with, uh, with DHY for this piece. But that's a small part of the $3 million ask for that. The major components are what I outlined previously, which was the design of other phases within Yarmouth, public outreach, as well as the continued water quality monitoring sampling. So that's a brief overview of that ask, uh, for capital, for wastewater. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might-
Any board members have any questions? I'll start with Eric.
I don't have any questions.
Tracy?
No, no, thank you.
Mike?
Hey, just for clarification, you said in 2011 that money was appropriated to do the design from Parker's River Bridge to the Barnstable Line, is that correct?
No, that was actually appropriated in 2009.
2009.
In 2011 was the construction funds that didn't pass.
Has that design work been completed?
To the 90% design level. So there is some final completion that needs to be done. Obviously, if that is, uh, going to go to a DHY, there might be some pump station changes in there. Uh, so there is some, you know, final documentation, uh, specifications that need to be developed so those can be incorporated in the Mass DOT plans. So there's a little bit of work, but it's at the 90% design. The bulk of it is complete.
Okay. So the three mil is going to cover the rest? The balance of Route 28 down to the treatment plant, if it's a Dennis-Yarmouth, at least a DY project, if not a DYH project?
That's correct.
And also, South Shore Drive would be included in, in that three million.
That is correct.
And the 10% is already covered. The remainder of the work's already, the money's already been appropriated for that, correct?
No, that would be in the three million as well.
That would be in the three mil as well.
Correct.
The other 10%?
Correct.
Thank you.
Dan?
I'll sit.
You're outside? Okay. You're excused.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So are we ready to bring in the rest of the, uh, Capital Budget Committee? Pat?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm going to turn this portion of the agenda, which is the Capital Budget Committee's recommendations for FY '22. Um, I'm going to turn this over to, I see, we've got, we're not all remote, we have-
Yes, Sandy Fife and Judy Tarver, they'll be here in person and the rest of the committee is by remote.
Great. Welcome.
Hello.
I should note, Mr. Chairman, that we pressed the committee into very quick action because of COVID. They acted on last year's items in a very quick fashion and turned around and did an entire condensed version of a one and a half million dollar levy potential ask, uh, in, in a fashion to get here tonight to meet the traditional budget guidelines. So I want to thank the committee and Pat Armstrong, uh, staff and Ed Centeo for getting us to a point where we are back on budget, regular budget schedule, even though we went through an awful lot very quickly.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, we, as we, we are a group of seven members. We have some members here tonight, Kurt's in the background, but we also have some of our members zooming in. You have, so this year's been a unique year. We want to thank the board for their leadership during this year because it's been a tough year for the, for you and for the town. We will, especially want to thank Pat for all her help because without her help, we couldn't have put this together within four weeks. So thank you, Pat. The first slide basically goes over our process. Uh, I'll quickly go through this for the public's sake. Um, the Board of Selectmen issued the budget guidelines and goals in October and the town administrator issued the call to the departments to set up their calendars and to do their submission. So we did receive, um, the request on October 29th. And as Dan said, it was a pretty quick turnaround. Um, we met with departments from November 9th to the 24th. And we want to thank the departments for, for their flexibility in adhering to our schedule. So tonight, we're here to, to give our recommendations and to present them also to the Finance Committee. We will be before you again in, um, February, um, for the public hearing on the 23rd to present our final recommendations. So for the public's sake, this is the process of the Capital Budget Committee. And basically what happens is we receive our information in September, October and November, we review our, review it with the departments and then we prioritize and we present our preliminary recommendations in December for our final recommendations in, around February, depending on when the town meeting is. We als- always welcome the public to come to our meetings. We have been zooming, zooming a lot, um, and we do welcome public input. So this slide is an overview of our recommendations for this year. We looked at 35 requests totaling 3.2- We looked at 35 requests totaling $3.7 million, and we recommended 30% of the overall capital request, and actually 70% this year of the levy eligible items. That seems a little bit high compared to normal, but we didn't see as many larger items this year. I think departments were conservative with all that's going on in the economy. So we haven't, we are recommending the full $1.5 million from the levy. If when we do our final recommendations, there are any, there are any remaining amounts, we would recommend that they go into the Capital Stabilization Fund. So this slide shows an overview of where the funding sources will be coming from, and we'll get into more detail when we get to the next slide. We're recommending 1.5 from the levy, $955,000 from Water Enterprise Fund, $989,000 from the Fire Department receipts, roadway and stormwater of $1.8 million, a possible borrowing or free cash, we'll talk about more about that item. This $601,377 is for a all department request to upgrade for record storage. We highly recommend this item, but we have not indicated a funding source for this particular item. It needs more discussion. It could be a borrowing, it could be free cash, but it is to renovate the old water department and upgrade to be compliant with state law for the storage of our town records. We have six items from free cash, some of them you have seen before. Many of our recommendations you'll recognize from the annual town meeting. So moving forward, these are our recommendations, our 21 items from the tax levy. Most of those are either reoccurring or were presented at the annual town meeting and deferred. For the cruisers, we recommended last year, but they were deferred. We recommend replacement of four vehicles this year. The taser replacement, this is the second year, just was approved at town meeting for the first year of funding. On the firearm shooting trailer, last year, we highly recommended $100,000 from the levy for the firearm shooting trailer, and the committee did agree to recommend an additional $200,000 in free cash if the board wanted to approve that. That item we do recommend for mandatory firearms training. Radio system upgrade, we've, you've seen this article before. We recommended la, last year, in the previous two years, I think 251 year, 351 year. This is actually the last year you're going to see this item, so we were pleased to hear that they were able to utilize the previous funding sources, and they were able to do quite a bit with that money. So we do recommend $100,000 for that. The next item is new. This is a replacement of the animal transport vehicle. It has 141,000 miles on it, and it's in pretty poor condition, so we, we do recommend that. The next item is also new. It's the patrol boat engines. It's for emergency response, it's in very poor conditions, and we do recommend that purchase. The next item is reoccurring. Dredging is something that happens every single year. It just approved at the special town meeting, but they do need some additional funds. And this item, we weren't able to recommend the whole amount due to funding, and if we were to be able to get more money, we would recommend the full $75,000. The next item you saw at the annual town meeting is to replace a dump truck for the DPW Highway. It's a 20-year-old dump truck and in poor condition, and that is another item. Did I miss one?
Yep.
Oh, thank you. Before that, there is a new item. It's a replacement of the work barge motor. The motor currently is a 2007 and in poor condition. For $12,000, we do recommend that item. HVAC is something you see every year, it's reoccurring. It was, it's a special town meeting, we are recommending an additional $25,000. The town hall front doors were on the annual town meeting warrant, and they were deferred. These are more energy efficient, more secure, and low maintenance. We recommend that item for $30,000. The drinking fountain upgrades, you also saw this at the annual town meeting, and it was deferred for $20,000. The bunker and field rake was another item that was at the annual town meeting that was deferred. That item is for $13,500. It's 15 years old and in poor condition. Removal of the clay and replacement with stone dust at the Peta Homer Park was also at the annual town meeting. We do recommend that for $20,000. The next item replaces mower, and the oldest mower goes to the Highway Department for further use, and we, we do recommend that for $12,500. Next item is a front end loader, it's 29 years old. This item was also on the annual town meeting warrant and was deferred for $20,000. Under P, under the IT Department at the special town meeting, the first year of a five-year replacement plan for $55,000 was approved. We recommend a second year on that. And the same with the network and infrastructure, special town meeting deferred in the spring, was approved in November for $50,000, 50.5, and we do recommend a second year on that. The next item is the townwide telephone system replacement. This lease expires in June, and we recommend $130,000 for that. The next two items you're pretty familiar with, they've been on the list for quite a while. The DY Energy Management System. We have heard through a good source that the town of Dennis will be placing this on their annual town meeting warrant. It has been on our list for several years, and we do recommend that. And last year, we did ra, we did recommend the burner replacement, but as I said at the annual town meeting, all capital was deferred, but this is back on. So that's a total from the levy of 1.5 million. The next items are from other financing sources. The Water Enterprise Fund is the first list. Well redevelopment, which will redevelop four or five of the 24 wells that we have. The second item, we had much discussion on, and this will replace the water mains from Dennis to Barnstable with considerable savings, and it will be done in conjunction with the Mass DOT paving. So if we do the whole area, we were able to save some money, so we do recommend the $350,000 on that. The next item purchases 10 parcels for well development on Higgins Crow Road, $300,000. The next item replaces failing meters, which means lost revenue for the town if we, we don't keep up on that, for $50,000. And the last item from the Water Department is a replacement of a vehicle with an F-250. This vehicle has 161,000 miles, is in poor condition. So the next three items are from, are very familiar, from, from the roadways and tax levy. The first two, we see every year, based on the 2013 override vote for road improvements, $1,340,245, and stormwater improvements for $230,625. The next item is new to us. If you look at the five-year plan, it is recommended every other year for some money to repair and replace sidewalks. We have 37 miles of sidewalks, and we, we do recommend putting some money into those repairs. From the ambulance fund, last year, we did not recommend the dive equipment. We did defer it for a year. Due to leakage, leakage issues, we highly recommend the dive equipment in the amount of $13,000 this year. The next item will need some more discussion on the board's part and on the department's part. We do recommend the replacement of the 1996 pumper. It's 25 years old, it has 111,000 miles, and it's $750,000. This particular item may not be able to come 100% from the ambulance receipts fund. You might have to do a combination of some type of borrowing, whether internal or external. So that will need some more discussion. The next item is 10 years old. It's a four-wheel drive pickup for the EMS training supervisor for $65,000, and replacing a Ford Escape, which is 12 years old, with 100,000 miles, with an SUV. Both those items are used for emergency response. And the last item from the Fire Department is replacing breathing apparatus, 12 units, due to age and poor condition. These next six items, we recommend from free cash. Three of them, which I'll talk about at first, were at the, at the annual town meeting from free cash, but were deferred. The first one is the voting tabulators for the town clerk's office. There's eight of them, and they all need to be replaced at once because they need to be the same. Then for the Police Department at the annual town meeting was the Celebrite system, which has to do with cellphone data. It was recommended by the Matrix study for $25,000, and that was deferred also. And then, second item from the Police Department was some furniture replacement. Chairs are broken, and those were deferred for $14,000. So we have three new items that we're recommending from free cash. The first one is the portable safety radios and two-way radios used by the lifeguards, the camp staff, the seasonal staff to communicate with the police, fire, and Department of Natural Resources. They have high repair costs, and we recommend replacing those for $22,110. The next item is some security cameras down at Flax Pond. They've had a lot of incidences with vandalism and graffiti, and we feel that this small amount of money might help with that situation for $15,550. And the last new item on the free cash list is the Police Department front foyer cement pad. This particular pad has cracks in it. It's a handicap issue, a wheelchair issue, someone walking with a cane could trip and fall. That's only $8,000. So we have free cash recommendations of $146,260. There were some items that we did not recommend. Some of them we would have liked to have recommended if we had more money, but we didn't. So there are a few that you've seen from last year that we actually deferred from last year. The first item was a natural resource truck. They did receive a truck at town meeting in the fall, and we did recommend an animal control being in our previous recommendations, so we will defer this for one more year. The second item, the Lewis Bay Study, this has been on for the last couple of years, and we've been looking for more of a regional approach, or perhaps grant money to fund that. There was no scope of work for either that or the Long Pond Study, so the committee felt they'd like to defer that until we got more information. The next two items, we would have liked to have recommended, because they were on last year. And when something comes for us for more, more than once, we feel important to, to look at it more closely. But the navigation boys and the police station carpeting due to the funding issues in the economy this year, we were hoping they could get one more year out of those. The next item is software licensing and applications. We, we did feel this was important, but with funding issues, it's important that we stay up to date on, on stuff like this, but it didn't make the cut. The next item, we did not recommend, all ties to the negotiations with Comcast for the townwide fiber network replacement, and we did defer that for one more year until we get more information. And the last two items were withdrawn. We want to bring your attention to Run Pond revitalization and the coastal infrastructure repairs. Every year, Natural Resources brings us, brings this before us, and we, we feel surely it's worthy of funding, but it's much too large, out of scope for us to fund with our 1.5 million, but it does need more vetting on the board's part and on the public's part to come up with a plan, especially on the coastal infrastructure repairs. So we are required to give you a capital plan based on the department's requests. This, this plan includes every, every request that they have, even the large requests. For the 10-year plan, though, what we do is we pull out the projects that are over a million dollars, projects that we, we could definitely not fund within the capital budget. Glad to answer any questions on that. On the 10-year plan, we put together a, a list of large projects, more for discussion for the board. These projects need more, more vetting and more discussion on each, each one of them, more discussion on how, how they would be funded, and we just want to bring those before you so you have an idea of what's out there, and just more for your information. So we, challenges and considerations, many of these you've seen before. We really feel with the cap, with the routine capital, we have inadequate funding at the 1.5 million. And we just asked, and we asked last year, that we possibly consider increasing this by two and a half percent each year. Often, the reoccurring annual capital expenses, like dredging, cruisers, HVAC, they're reoccurring. They really either, I think, need to be put back into the budget because they're diminishing our 1.5 million each year. We have to consider those, and they're important, and they're important to our departments and, and to what we do, so. We always have issues with offered expenses bundled and presented as capital because capital has been taken out of the budget over the last 15, 20 years. And the department's not knowing how, how to get these items, they bundle them together, and they're over $10,000, and they become a capital item where they really should be small capital within the budget. Often, projects are presented to us in advance of organizational policy decisions, and an example of that may be the I-NET replacement, or, and then the creation, we've talked about this a couple of years in a row, looking at the waterways similar to the roadways and create some type of annual appropriation, either through an override. We strongly feel the residents would, would feel this is important. And the, and there could be some discussion on the creation of a bundled bond issue on large items that we can't really afford within our, with our funding sources. And last, last, we've talked about this many years in a row, is updating the existing 2006 vehicle replacement policy. We're hoping to tackle that this year with the board's help and at least name it something different than the 2006 vehicle replacement policy. So we're here to answer any questions. We will be back on the 23rd with our final recommendations of February. If you have any questions, I mean, many of the items you've already seen before, and and we, we really thank the departments for their due diligence in, in putting this together so quickly.
Very good. Let me go around to the board for questions. Eric, I'll start with you.
Thank you, and thank you to you and your committee for all the hard work you did last month. That is certainly a great task to put that all together in such a short period of time. I do have some questions, some are comments that don't necessarily need an answer.
We like those, Ken.
The, the pumper replacement for 750, was 601 of that what you were recommending for borrowing or free cash? Was that the entire 600? Was that the entire six hundred? No?
No, six hundred and one was for storage, public storage renovations of
The old water department.
The old water department.
So this would be, so any funds needed for the pumper would be in addition to that?
Well, they might be able to afford three hundred and fifty of that out of the ambulance fund, but the rest of it would have to come up.
We would have to come up with four hundred.
And similar to before when they paid back the hundred thousand dollars every year. But whether you borrowed it external or internal would be a discussion that you'd have with your finance director.
Phil, you look like you're, we have done this in the past with the fire department, right? Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
It's okay.
I didn't know he was there. I didn't know you were here.
If it's okay, yeah, I can comment on it if that's appropriate. Hi, Phil Simonean, Fire Chief. So we've done this several different ways over the years. When we bought the tower truck in two thousand and four, we did a five-year lease purchase. Years ago, when Mr. Hinchey was the town administrator, he didn't want to do the lease purchase anymore. So we essentially borrowed from ourselves from stabilization. So in two thousand and sixteen, pumper, we borrowed four hundred from the stabilization and we've been paying it back a year and you've seen it in subsequent town meeting. We pay back a hundred thousand a year. I would think we could do something very similar with this purchase as well, either internally or if, I believe I would defer to Ed on that as far as how our stabilization looks, but I think it's pretty good.
All right. Yeah, I remembered we had done something similar to that in the past. I didn't know what the length and the terms of the agreement were, but.
We use free cash to fund the truck and then the repayments went back to stabilization. If we were to use stabilization, we'd have to have a two-thirds vote to pull out of stabilization in order to do the funding. With interest rates as low as they are now, the fact that we're talking about the borrowing for the work to be in conjunction with the State Department on the Route twenty-eight, potentially something for our record storage, it seems like we can combine those dollars for a borrowing as opposed to trying to reduce our stabilization, showing that to the rating agencies, even though we can try to couch it in some way. With low interest rates, we may want to just go ahead and straight borrow this because we have other borrowing to do at the same time.
Okay.
Did you have a question, Mike?
Ed, on the repayment on that, if you did a combined borrowing, would you then allocate out the repayment to the particular departments?
We would allocate to the ambulance fund. Everything else would be general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Eric still has.
I also want to say that we're also looking at water department borrowing as well. So that could be a fairly large borrowing that we need to take a look at.
Ed, stay there for a second, please, if you don't mind. Just a comment on that. I'm not a fan of paying one percent interest. I'd prefer to see us borrow it from ourselves.
Then you could go with free cash as opposed to tying it up because if you don't get the two-thirds vote at town meeting, you won't be able to buy the truck.
Understood. The roadway improvements, you know, that original number was one point one, but that was the technical override in two thousand and thirteen. I'm assuming it has escalated to the one point three four and that was based on a desired total of two million and nine hundred of that used to come from the state. Ed, what are we getting for a state match on roadway work now? I'm assuming it's gone down. I'm just curious as to how much. And a follow-up to that is, are we actually spending all of this money every year?
Yeah, so the answer to your last question is, we try very hard to. In fact, because a lot of this was deferred to the fall town meeting, we did spend a good chunk of it. I think we had three hundred thousand left that was uncommitted. So we do have a very aggressive program with resurfacing our roads and stormwater and so we do a very good job of spending this money each year. And the first question was about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in chapter ninety each year. That's at a two hundred million dollar bond authorization with the state. And so there has been some discussion about going up to three hundred million and we certainly pushed for that and use MMA to help us, you know, push for that. And we have seen that once or so in the last ten years. And that's a higher number, but typically it's been about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So that's holding fairly steady.
Fairly steady, yes.
Two other comments. Almost sixteen grand for Flax Pond Security. You can get a Blink system on Amazon for a hundred and fifty bucks. Why is it so expensive? They're looking at you, Pat. And I looked it up. That comes with HD cameras, cloud storage, motion detectors.
Direct connection.
One thirty-nine, actually.
Direct connection into YPD and the cameras are connected like in security. Actually, this was a cooperative discussion and presentation from the natural resources department that often goes and follows up on a lot of the calls that are there and the recreation department. So Carl was looking at other pieces and to put it as a part of the network on his cameras, on his loop that he could do and this was the funds that we thought instead of, because you know, those nests, you actually stick on a magnet on the building. So all you got to do is kind of walk up and go like this and then it's yours. So for, you know, I know it's a lot of money, but the home ones really wouldn't serve the purpose.
My last comment, well, I think we need to have more discussion on the thought of, I don't know what the one hundred thousand dollar CBC recommendation for the shooting trailer plus the two hundred thousand dollar recommendation of free cash gets us. I don't know what's being contributed by the organization that was created after Sergeant Gannon's death and what their contribution. I don't know how that relationship works or what their expected contribution is. It's been a while since we talked about that, so I would want to know a little bit more about how all of those things come together. My last comment is twenty grand for the softball field. When I was involved in Little League, dads with landscaping companies got a truck full of stone dust and a bobcat and volunteered their time and got some materials donated and it cost very little. This seems like a lot, so. Those are my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to respond?
As far as the police department question, we'll get you more information on that, on the shooting trailer. We did have a discussion with the chief, you know, if we raise some funding, then other funding will come.
Yeah, I just don't know how, what the relationship between the foundation and the town's contribution is and.
I can't answer that question, but we will get more information before we come before you again.
He did say they didn't have a firm number yet from the foundation.
But it would be, you're prepared to come back in February with the, with a one hundred in capital plus a recommendation for an additional two hundred in free cash?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Tracy.
So I'm sorry, I guess I misunderstood. I thought the recommendations for the free cash were here. You're adding the two hundred thousand back to.
We didn't, we didn't put it in our formal recommendations. It was just, we support two hundred thousand.
Yeah, I guess the only thing about that piece that I'm concerned about is it sitting, if they don't have the full seven fifty to purchase the trailer, that money is going to sit there when we have other things that are being deferred for it. So I don't know, I just think a long-range plan of making sure that we get the full thing funded somehow or we look at funding it at a higher rate next year or whatever, but I just don't want the money just sitting there with them not being able to move forward. When you talked about the HVAC various locations here for DPW, I mean, can, if it is a reoccurring expense, I agree with your sentiment that it should be put into the budget somehow. But what facilities, I mean, we're building a brand-new facility for DPW, so I don't know what.
That's a good question.
Jeff, Kobe.
Yes, thank you. That's just a reoccurring amount to just have HVAC systems repaired. Just two years ago, even just the chiller for this building was forty-one thousand dollars. So this is for the entire town buildings, whether it's the senior center or either of the libraries. It's not the DPW facility. Trust me, we won't need to invest that money in a new building, but it's our older infrastructure, maintenance and replacement of components for the HVAC.
Okay. And it's that much every year?
It's, we have appropriated fifty thousand dollars last year and felt that with the amount that we had remaining, that twenty-five thousand for this next year would carry us through. So we tried to only request what's needed, but yes, some money is needed every year.
Tell me about the IT net replacement. What is that?
The INET, I-N-E-T. So that's the called the institutional network. That's the Comcast installed many years ago, probably almost fifteen years ago, fiber network that connects a number of town buildings. So there was, there's been a lot of change in the last few years as it relates to the FCC and their policies as it relates to cable TV companies. And there was a thought up until recently that the best way to maintain an INET system is to buy one or purchase one or install one from the town's perspective. So that's kind of why, where that ask for all that money, seven hundred thousand dollars, I believe, had come from over the years. Subsequent to that, with the recent new board sitting at FCC, what has actually evolved across a number of communities that's just beginning in this past year is a multi-year lease agreement that runs concurrent with Comcast with your TV franchise agreement. So one of the component legs of the Comcast negotiations is they're by policy with FCC allowed to charge back communities for costs that incur to them associated with things that are outside a TV program. The INET is one of those things. So what is that cost of maintaining a system that basically has had virtually zero maintenance because of the nature of what it is all these years and we've been negotiating with them a dollar value on an annual payment? It's not even close to the finish line yet, but because of the way the Federal Communications Commission has allowed things to occur, we needed to have some sort of leverage with them. We shouldn't buy this system, but there is a cost to having it and that's what we're negotiating with Comcast right now. It's probably going to be a very manageable cost spread out over ten years and then we don't have to worry about it. If it goes down or needs maintenance, it's all part of our agreement. So that's why that has been deleted from the capital cost. It's actually a very good thing for us to be in that situation. Now, subsequent though to that, we are working with that state grant to begin stringing a backbone, a fiber, town-owned fiber backbone amongst some of the critical infrastructure just in case something down the line goes south with the INET. You'll have a town-owned fiber infrastructure.
So the record storage, so for years we had an item on here about the microfiche that we were scanning documents.
Yeah. My understanding, and this just came to me today and perhaps Ed has a little bit more detail on that, is the water department, the method in which the paper materials over there are stored is problematic, I guess. Is that fair to say, Ed?
Yes, one of the things discovered after taking or managing the town clerk's office is reading the town clerk's manual and the requirements for storing our records.
These are permanent records that can't be electronically stored?
We can store them electronically, but we can't destroy them.
Still need to store them.
We still need to store them, unfortunately. We're pushing back. We've gotten permission to say that if they're going to be destroyed within a certain period of time, then you could potentially store them or destroy them earlier if you have the computer systems that allow you to do that. So we've been using Laserfish to digitize these records. Those records are available in many cases to the public for their research, but what we haven't done is stored the documents the way they're supposed to according to the law and the law indicates essentially that the selectmen are supposed to provide the funding to store, you know, town records appropriately. What we'd like to do, though, is go through a wreckage destruction process, destroy as many records as we can. We've been doing that in finance and have greatly reduced our footprint. We're going to be doing that hopefully with other departments. And then what we want to be able to do is store those records comfortably in the old water department.
So what is this six hundred thousand?
So we need to have, so in our vaults, we have doors that are this thick and it's fireproof. We have shelving in the old water department that's wood. We're not supposed to have wood shelving. So the building is supposed to be fairly fireproof in terms of being able to store these records. Again, we're looking at that, you know, as a potential borrowing. We need, we know we need to do something potentially for the police department. So it looks like we're going to have to do some borrowing. So, you know, with some, you know, we could do some, you know, inter-borrowing, you know, for a fire truck, but, you know, our revenues, if we're going to sequester short-term rentals, all for the wastewater and the funding that we just talked about, the three million dollars we need for the Route twenty-eight funding that was passed at the previous town meeting, that money off the table, you know, we need to look at what all the asks are and then do we want to borrow them? And then, you know, do we want to do a debt exemption in this economy? So, you know, we have to take a hard look at what we can do and what we can't do. The records situation has not been something we've addressed for a number of years. Do we need to address it this year? We're just putting it on the table that, to indicate that that's a problem and I think at some point in time we need to address it. Is this the right year? That's part of what this whole process is about.
Thanks. I don't like to borrow.
Yeah.
I think it's, I mean, people are really struggling out there. I think we, you know, with the new, both new schools added, the DPW facility, I think we have to be really very careful about adding anything to that at this point in time. We haven't even seen the bills for, that hasn't even hit them yet. So I'm concerned about doing that. So I would be in favor of the free cash for the pumper with the payback system that we had over the last, with the last purchase that worked out quite well. Because, you know, they get it, you have, I mean, and maybe if you have in your stabilization now three hundred, perhaps that payback could be faster. But I know we had trouble one year in the receipts for that over the course of very many years. So however we can plan on doing that. But I am concerned about the coastal infrastructure repair, not having a plan for that. We're putting that off. The Run Pond restoration, I know many, many years ago, we've talked about it before, that went to town meeting and it failed. So that's something that, you know, I think we should get the details of again, but I'm not as concerned about that. But I think that we need to come up with a plan for the coastal infrastructure repair because continuing to put that off, if you look at our ten-year plan, you know, that's just putting everything back and it's probably not going to get any less expensive. So I'd like staff to.
I think there's approximately ten million on the plan.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
There's approximately ten million on the five-year plan for coastal.
Yep, I was just, I was just looking at that. So I'm not sure what the, what staff's plan is on that for the future over the course of the ten years, but I think we should start to look at that. Record storage. The school district, we've had questions every year with the school district. I'm always surprised at the items that we have. Was there a full recommendation of other items that wasn't here or that's it, this is all they requested? You know, it's interesting because I don't think the school committee itself reviews the capital that's put before our community. I think it's done by administration and it just amazes me what's there, knowing the status still of Emmy Small and all the issues that the school district has that these are the only two items that were requested. I just wanted to point that out.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you ladies. Thank you all listening at home and in the back for all the work that you guys do. I appreciate it.
That's great. Mike, questions?
I won't be redundant. I'm interested in the same items that Eric and Tracy have raised and also interested in. raised and, um, also interested in, in, um, Ed's observations about, you know, various capital needs, um, whether you could do some bundling, uh, on borrowing, um, how that would compare against internal borrowing, you know, in whole or in part. There has to be some kind of, at least, uh, some kind of basic overview on that. You can talk about percent, two percent, but what, what does that mean on, on a particular item? How much money are we going to be borrowing and over what period of time? And what would the combined interest figure be, and is there any debt drop-off? And I know that these things, you know, to be very, very specific, uh, would have to be calculated after the priorities are set, but, uh, maybe you can give us, you know, some general guidance. I mean, borrowing is always good when money's cheap. That's my philosophy. Obviously, it is better to pay cash because you don't pay any interest, but, you know, most of us in business or in municipalities, there comes, there come times when you do have borrowing opportunities because of low rates.
Just want to point out, uh, prior to what's going to happen in February and March, where we, uh, borrow for the DPW garage and for the school, we have an incredibly low, much lower than most communities by a great distance in terms of the debt that we have. We have essentially run very thin in terms of any debt drop-off, so there's not a, a bunch of debt drop-off. What, what I'm looking at is the numbers that we're talking about. So, uh, right now, you know, if we were to try to do all of this with free cash, we're not going to have a lot of free cash from, for anything else. So, if we, you know, try to do this inter-fund and not try to reduce our stabilization amount, which would send a bad signal, I think, and I think, Eric, you talked about, uh, trying to get a triple A, uh, not too many meetings ago, that would be a bad signal. I think you do have a capital stabilization, which is in a different category. Uh, you could choose to go for two-thirds vote and reduce that to fund some of these types of things. I know of the, the last time we talked about that, that wasn't something that you wanted to do, but that's why the money was put, put aside, was so that we could, uh, fund the capital. In terms of the borrowing for, uh, the wastewater effort, the five million dollars, and of that Jeff wants to draw down three million, uh, that was passed not as an override. That would have to be funded within our existing budget. That would not affect the tax rate. What we have to do is we have to figure out, you know, by utilizing the short-term rental dollars, not use that for anything else, and that would pay for our debt service. So, we don't have that kind of money if we're going to spend it in total. So, I, I, I understand what you're saying, and I think this is, we're talking about the priorities, and I want to see, you know, based on the free cash usage, based on the wastewater, uh, based on the one point five million dollars in capital, when we look at, um, our levy, uh, limit, are we even going to be, uh, able to, uh, be under the proposition two and a half mark? So, depending on what spending you guys all want to do, we got to figure out, do we pay for that all this year with funds on hand, or do we actually borrow it so we can stretch out the amount of money that we want to spend now? Again, economy's not great. Still, I think it'll recover. I think it'll recover fast, particularly if the vaccine works out, but, you know, we're still behind in receipts. If you take away, uh, the short-term rental, that's going to be, excuse me, earmarked to wastewater. And we'll have some numbers for you, uh, fairly soon, as soon as we close out, uh, November, and particularly when we look at the short-term rental numbers for, uh, December, we can look at everything else and see where are we in terms of local receipts. So, we're, we're putting a lot of spending out there, but, uh, there aren't a lot of mechanisms to pay for it all in one year by inter-fund borrowing. So, you know, we can add up all of these pieces that don't seem to fit within the levy and try to figure out what that will mean. And we're going to get a rating review in four to six weeks with S and P as it relates to the two borrowing initiatives that we're going to have, so we'll know what the interest rates are going to be, uh, fairly soon, and we'll know what our rating is going to be. Again, you know, we'll see if we can push it up to a triple A so we can reduce our borrowing, but, uh, again, this is not a great economy.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Anything else, Mike? No? Dan, Mr. Horgan?
Is it Mrs. Fife or Mrs. Fife?
It's Mrs.
Mrs.
It's whatever.
My name's Dan Horgan. I've never had a chance to meet you guys, uh, and you are men?
Judy Tarver.
Okay, um, first of all, just thank you for the presentation. It's very thorough. I have many of the same concerns that have been mentioned here tonight and then some. And rather than take the board's time, what I'd like to do is just, um, if I can arrange a time where I can sit down with you and go through in detail some of my questions. And that'll be it. Thank you.
That's very good. Thanks, Dan. Um, yeah, I too, uh, echo the sentiments that are expressed by the other board members. But I do think what we need to do soon is figure out how do we get the coastal infrastructure discussion sort of off the dime. It's sort of been, sort of been, it's been sitting there and sitting there and sitting there, and, um, I think we, we need to look to you and our finance team for at least what's the problem, a definition of the problem, how much money are we talking about, and at least laying out the options and any potential recommendations. I'm not suggesting that that'd be done now, but I think once we get through this particular heavy lift right now, I, I'd like to see you help us sort of frame our options and work with our finance director and finance team to sort of think through how best to tackle this, or at least what our options are. And then at least tee it up so the board can begin to have a thoughtful discussion about where we go, because all we're doing is just sort of kicking the can down the road. Did you want to comment on this?
Yeah, I, I didn't. I think that's a good point. I think where we're getting a stinking place is that, and I think it's like the other studies, I think we need to probably utilize free cash or another mechanism to get engineering done, to get a better number. Uh, I think those numbers have been put forth, but there's not, there's not a lot of detail to the numbers. So, in order to get the detail, we need to get some type of overall estimate of how much the engineering will cost to really nail down a plan and nail down, um, you know, the way to proceed with, uh, the coastal infrastructure, and then we can, uh, I think, nail it down and move forward.
Yeah, let me, let me respond to that. I, I do think, no question, uh, a lot of the numbers are conceptual. They're very preliminary. They're based on reconnaissance, ballpark information, but before we necessarily go down that road, which is an expense, I do think we can at least make an assumption that the capital costs are real. It's an assumption for the purposes of coming up with a range of options. And then, if the board has a consensus of pursuing one of those options, then I would recommend that we consider maybe firming up some of the costs on some of those items and begin to look at how to schedule this. But the reality is, we're looking at a fairly sizable number of very expensive projects, and they're worth pursuing. The problem is, the challenge is on how to finance them. So, rather than have the same conversation, same time next year, where we're all sort of wondering, okay, jeez, what are we going to do? I think that before we get to this point again, we're going to need your help, Ed's help, the administration's help to figure out, okay, what are our options? Let's not make any judgments necessarily in the complete wisdom. We just know that water infrastructure is expensive. I mean, that's the reality. The Run Pond project, that's an expensive project, but the town has a fairly substantial amount of federal and potentially state funding that could come in. I know the feds are in it for a substantial amount of money, um, so the question's going to be, you know, what's, what's our share? But even our share is high. I mean, that's the, the number that you're getting is the town share, and that's, so then I think we can go through the process of maybe as a board, maybe having a debate on some of these projects. Maybe some of them, you know what? It, they're probably not worth pursuing, but the overall need to figure out how do we finance a fairly sizable chunk of coastal capital improvements is going to be there. Uh, we may be quibbling on cost estimates and so forth, but that's going to be there. So, I just feel that now's the time to start thinking about, again, once we get through the, the urgency of this budget cycle, I do think that we need to just basically make it a priority, and that is to sit down the huddle, come up with a, use that as a strawman proposal, and then develop a range of options. So, that, that's my only suggestion, is just to move that topic along and see if we can...
Right suggestion. Thank you.
Does that help? Did you get enough feedback tonight from everybody?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one more question? And maybe this is for Ed. You know, nobody really addressed your request for a, an annual two and a half percent escalation. I was just...
I didn't request it.
No, no, I wa, I meant, I meant Sandy and Judy, but the question may be better directed towards you. And I may not be able to articulate this exactly the way I'm thinking about it, but is there a way to, to set up capital investment accounts so that you're able to operate, perhaps a year behind and be able to invest capital money so that you're able to take advantage of the returns in the following year, just as a creative way of trying to use money to make money so that you then have more money to use moving forward in the future? Is there a way to do that? I mean...
We do have an investment committee, and we do have an investment strategy and plan, and what we've done is we've said our trust funds are going to go into long-term investments because we don't need the money right away. It's not one year because you've got a lot of fluctuations in a, in a single year as, as people have seen. And what we've said, for example, is that anything over four million dollars in stabilization, we would take that amount of money and put that into something that's a longer-term investment so that, that could make more money. So, you know, as, as somebody that works in government, um, even in the private sector, you try to be fairly conservative with, with money that you might think is a shorter-term horizon. So, if we were to invest something in a, in a capital trust fund that might have a five-year horizon, and we could predict, maybe, you know, the stock market goes up on average eight percent per year for some period of time, then maybe you could do that, but then you're taking that money, you know, and putting that on the sidelines. So, you know, that's, that's not a concept that we can't use, and we do use that to some degree, like with our educational trust funds or our cemetery trust funds. So, we're trying to grow that money a little bit more than we used to in the past. It's invested with, uh, Rockland Trust, um, same thing with our, um, OPEB money. Uh, we've, we've got the highest discount rate because, um, we're actually funding that on a, on an annual basis, the, the ARC, except for the last, uh, period, and our, um, our liabilities are going down, so, yeah, that's obviously a, a plan, but I would have a longer-term horizon. And, and we have put money away in the capital stabilization that could be used for some of these things, and that's been there for some, uh, particular period of time.
Is that in a similar fund or in a similar investment?
It's, no, again, the money, it's, it's like, uh, it's under two million dollars, so, again, we might say something like that. You may need to use it this year. Would you, if you did take a hit on the stock market, you know, then you would have less money in that particular case, so we've been fairly conservative. But we can, you know, we can talk to our investment advisors and see what we can do, but you would put that away in type of, in a capital stabilization, which we have, we would decide that we're going to invest that with something that's more aggressive than money market rates, which are terrible now. They were fine before. One of the big drivers last fiscal year was how much we made in short-term interest because Sue Ripley, our treasurer, collector, was moving money around to, to the best rates of return, so, you know, it's not, it's not something we don't currently do, but we do it with a small, very small slice of money.
It seems like if we could invest it to the maximum extent possible, you know, and then be able to use the dividends to, you know, whatever they may be, you know, may not be a two and a, might be, could be seven percent, um, one year, could be nothing another year, but seems like that would create some flexibility to have a little bit of extra money above and beyond the one point five.
Right. And, and we still need to look at all those numbers based on all the wants...
Right.
And see what we can actually afford without, I'm assuming we're not going to increase, I, I don't, I don't know what you, uh, what you all think about what, what the tax rate should do, uh, in this particular environment. So, you know, that's another, another concern, because, you know, I think one of the goals is to actually put the one point three million back into the tax levy, put the one point five back into the tax levy. Is this ye, the year we can even do that? So, that's part of what we need to look at.
Brings me to my last question. What do we have for debt drop-off coming up? Very little?
You know, very, yeah, change. I can, I can get that information to you, but the, the debt drop-off in the previous years, again, we have incredibly low debt because of the one point five million dollars that's been spent on capital, uh, but we are going to increase our debt with some of these large purchases.
But stay tuned. That will change. Thank you. All right, and, uh, I think that does it unless there's anything else to add to the capital budget discussion, so, uh, you're excused. Thank you so much, and for the folks watching on TV and on our Zoom committee meeting, thank you all, folks, for participating tonight. All right, the next item on the agenda is, uh, capital, excuse me, capital, yeah, board and committee actions. We're going to start with you, Mr. Horgan, and, uh, your appointment recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the course of the last few weeks, I've had a chance to go out and meet with some of our committee chairs and, um, uh, address some of the appointments and/or reappointments, so I'd make a recommendation tonight that we appoint Ms. Debbie Clark to the Recreation Commission's as the Recreation Commission's representative to the CPC Committee for a one-year term to run through November thirty, two thousand, twenty, twenty-one.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion hearing? None. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It carries unanimously. Next item.
I also recommend that we appoint Mr. Barry Margolin to the Energy Committee. This appointment is for a three-year term, which will run through December thirty-one, two, twenty, twenty-three.
You have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It carries unanimously. Next item.
I'd make a motion or, uh, recommendation to reappoint Mr. Palmeri to the Energy Committee. This appointment is for three-year term, which will run through December thirty-one, twenty, twenty-three, to reappoint Ms. Starkey and Ms. Wood to the Energy Committee. These appointments are two-year terms, which will run through December thirty-one, twenty, twenty-two.
I'll move those recommendations.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries unanimously. Next item.
I'd make the recommendation that we reappoint Ms. Brun, Brunage and Ms. Craig to the Board of Health. These appointments are for three-year terms, which will run through October thirty-first, twenty, twenty-three.
So moved.
Second? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries unanimously.
I'd make a recommendation that we reappoint Ms. Ewing and Ms. Talladega to the Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee. These appointments are for three-year terms, which will run through December thirty-one, twenty, twenty-three. Also, to reappoint Ms. Vilbon to the Recycling and Solid Waste Committee. Her appointment is a two-year term, which will run through December thirty-one, twenty, twenty-two.
I'll move those appointments.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously.
And that concludes my recommendations for the season. Thank you.
Good, well done. Okay. Town Administrator Search Committee report or update? Uh, any commentary?
No, we're, Eric and I are continuing to work on this. There's a little bit of, um, you know, delay because of the, um, Thanksgiving holiday, but I'm hoping that we have something more concrete for you by the next meeting.
Okay, very good. Next item, uh, meeting minutes for February tenth?
So moved.
And February eleventh?
I'll move them.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes?
Could we move them separately because I need to abstain on the eleventh?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February tenth.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, uh, regarding the minutes of February tenth. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
One abstention.
One abstention.
Two absten, uh, no, I do...
You okay on this one?
I am okay on this.
You're clear on this one? Okay, we have one abstention.
Perfectly clear.
We'll have two abstentions.
And it carries.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of February eleventh, twenty, twenty.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 One abstention.
Opposed? And we have two abstentions?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, Dan Horgan and Eric Tolle. Okay, carries. Upcoming agenda review. Any commentary on upcoming agenda topics? Tracy's licking her chops over here. Anything you want to chime in on, Tracy?
No, I just.
Yeah, I know. I know, you're doing your Kevin Garnett routine.
So we're adding the 10th at 6:00 PM Zoom meeting.
Correct. Any other items?
I don't know if this is the proper place or, but we had the resignation of a school committee member. And I think we have to.
Thank you, I forgot about that.
Schedule that somehow. We've only been through this once since I've been on the board. I I know we got resumes. We had a joint interview with two or three candidates. I think it was three of them. That's how we did it, but, I mean, we don't have to do it that way.
If you don't mind, Mike, can I?
I think the resignation was pretty much immediate, so they're down one member.
I think the appointments chair has actually spent some time investigating this topic. Is that a fair characterization?
Yes, it is, actually.
Do you have any thoughts?
I apologize, I had this on my list of things to do and forgot about it.
There we go.
Last week, we received the resignation of Brian Sullivan from the D Y School System. I'm sure you've already seen a copy of it, but I'm just passing it out, hard copy. It's come to my attention that, and I remember the last time I was on the select board, we did experience the same process where the Board of Selectmen is called upon to select somebody and appoint till the next spring election cycle. So what I'd suggest or throw out to the committee is I've already heard from two people that they're interested in going for the appointment. What I'd ask you as a committee is, first off, to ask people who are interested in being considered for the seat as an appointment till the spring election, if they could fill out a talent bank form and send it to Pam Barnes so that she can collect them all and then distribute them as necessary. And then secondarily, totally the board's choice here, but either we can choose to interview all of the candidates that come forward or we could select a subcommittee of this board that could try to vet, if there's more than two or three, if we want to try to vet and pare it down a little bit for the final interview process. And I I leave that to your consideration.
Well, we did it a little bit different the last time, to my recollection. It was, we requested letters of interests with a resume, I believe. It wasn't a talent, I'm not sure, the town bank might be fine, but I don't know if that's even a selection on there.
It's just a matter, a vehicle to collect the information that we're looking for.
Well, either way, I agree with your summation that we need to put it out to the public and have them come in. And I think that they should come to all of us as as.
Full board?
The full board. To look at, and I think from there, we can probably make a decision. But I think timing is important, so maybe there should be a buy date.
I was going to suggest that we look at maybe trying to get the information collected by December 29th and then trying to make a selection in the January 15th meeting or.
12.
Do we know when their budget vote will be? Don't know. I think that that's a very important thing because they're going to be putting together their budget fairly soon. Is there, I was going to ask about this and I don't know if it's a possibility. I know our charter talks about selectmen members being elected to other things, but has a selectman ever been appointed to fill an interim role? Or is that allowed? Because, I mean, I go to the meetings anyway.
I'm a Tracy.
Well, I don't know if it's if we're allowed to, but I I would I would want Yarmouth's full representation.
Right.
At least until we appointed somebody else, especially with the budget coming up.
I think, I don't know if it applies to school committee members, but I think there's something in the charter to the effect that a selectman can serve on another committee if there's a four-fifth vote. In other words, all the other selectmen vote. I don't know if that person themselves can vote or not, but I know it requires a four-fifth vote.
Well, if it's allowed, I would be willing in the interim to sit there until we find a replacement.
How did you know, Eric?
It didn't matter what she said, I was nominating her.
This situation presented itself recently when a candidate was running for school committee and select board at the same time. And it just struck me that there was an inherent conflict there.
Well, the charter does not allow a select board member to serve on another elected board.
Okay.
I'm not sure that's true.
That's within, so it's.
Within the town.
Within the town.
Within a town.
Separate.
Board.
Right.
Yeah, but but.
I'm not trying to cause an issue, I'm just saying I'm willing, I I go to the meetings.
Another elected, yeah. I think the last opinion, I think the last opinion we got on this was from Bruce Gilmore, actually, who who said that a school committee position was not a an elected town position. It was a regional position.
It may very well work.
And I think it came up in the context of a candidate running for both boards. I think that was the context.
Well, rather than us try to figure this out here tonight, I'd like the appointments chair to go back and to do some further checking and advise the board, particularly with a sense of urgency, if there's a budget vote coming up.
I think we should get some kind of message out there, though, that people, you know, give them a timeframe to submit resumes. People who are interested, say.
By the end of the year.
By the end of this year, yeah. And then we'll we'll get those resumes and look at them and decide what we're going to do from there.
All right.
With a tentative interview data, the of the, what's the first meeting, the 15th?
12th.
12th, the 12th, with a tentative, a tentative interview data, the 12th.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put out another option. These aren't exclusive.
Right.
All right? But Tracy did offer, if if in the event she can, until a person is chosen, she's interested in serving, I mean, we certainly could vote on that tonight pending approval by town council. Would that, that might be just a way to make sure that we're not missing, you know, missing an opportunity to appoint her, provided it's.
I think it would have to be on the agenda, but as a vote, so, I mean.
Then let's do this. Let's, let's do this. Put this on the agenda for the meeting on the 10th.
Yeah, on the 12th, 10th, yeah.
Do you mind? Does anybody, I know we want to make that a D H Y discussion.
No, we'll make it quick and see if you get an opinion from town council. In the meantime, you should be able to do that.
Yeah, we should be able to have this cleared up by then.
I'll follow up with Jan and try to get the opinion, and then we can take that up.
Does anybody have an objection to us putting this on the agenda for the 10th? Eric?
No, I just want to make sure, you know, these special meetings quickly evolve to not-so-special meetings where we handle items other than what's in.
That should be a quick item, though, really. I mean, if town council says we can't do it, that's the end of it.
And it does, you know, I, the charter does say no selectman may hold any other elected town office, but I was recalling what you were recalling, Mike, and that the school committee is not a town.
Not a town office.
Office, correct.
Right.
And then the question would be whether or not, you know, do we go through the process of nominating Tracy and then looking for somebody to fill the slot? Or do we just hold Tracy in a position until the spring election?
I think we should still go forward and fill the slot because I think, yeah. I mean, I'm, I just don't want to, I don't want to leave the seat open. And I think now with the holidays and stuff, I I'm just making it as a stopgap, but I think it's important to fill it with somebody who has public interest other than myself.
No, I think Tracy's recommendation is 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 good. You know, let's cover ourselves, she's willing to do it for the time being.
And the last time we did this, it gave the public also an opportunity to see somebody before a potential election, whether or not they wanted to continue that.
So let's make sure that it's posted.
Give that person an opportunity to see if they want to continue.
Let's post it for the meeting on the 10th.
Okay.
All right? An interim. And then by then, Dan will have all his homework. We don't necessarily need to discuss it at length at the meeting on the 10th, but we can dispense with it relatively quickly, yeah. And deal with it then. No, so I think I think this discussion's been very, very helpful on that. So, is that clear? Good. All right, next item. Upcoming agenda review. Are we done with the agenda review for the time being?
My only comment was that I saw that, I was glad to see that the airport was in January. My only suggestion would be to bring in our Brawnsboro Airport rep and talk a little bit about this expansion. And I I talked to him the other day and he had a very good understanding of what exactly was involved in it. It wasn't the extent and the scope that was feared by many of the communications that we got.
Right.
So that, you know, having him come in and talk to that a little bit might allay some fears and concerns.
So you're comfortable with that agenda item?
Yep.
I also spoke to him as well and told him that we have some people that are pretty agitated in West Yarmouth and that it would be helpful to facilitate a dialogue with them in some discussion so that they can be appropriately engaged. Any other agenda items that we should attach? For this, okay. And the next item is individual items. Any individual items? Dan?
I don't know whether to say this or not, but.
Say it.
Uh-oh.
Generally, the rule in politics is if you're not sure, you don't.
No, 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 it's.
Stay at home, Dan. If that's asked that question, don't say it.
It's simple enough. No, I I had mentioned a couple of meetings ago that I was concerned. I drive around Yarmouth and I'm troubled by the amount of trash that I see on the roads. I've never seen it this bad. And it leaves such a bad taste in my mouth in terms of, you know, how we police our own community. And so I've I've tried to initiate the first weekend of every month of encouraging people to pick up just one bag of trash. Take a picture of it if you want, Facebook it if you want, but let's all of us make a commitment to police our town and to make it a little bit more attractive and just do it on a regular basis. Let's be proud of Yarmouth and make it green again. So I'm challenging everybody in the town to, first weekend of each month, go out and collect at least one bag of trash and help us clean up the side roads and the interchanges and the parks. It's just gotten to a point where it's disappointing to see such a beautiful landscape marred by the plastic that is just thrown everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, do you have an individual item?
Just one thought to keep it going. Chris Greeley, when she was in here, had recommended that there was a committee that, I forget the title, but it it kind of monitored what was going on at the airport and how it affected adjacent areas and was asking us to reconstitute that committee. And I think with the right people on there, that would be a really good committee to to get going again because I think airport expansion is in the cards. There's no question about that, and it's going to happen. And we should get people who are stakeholders and understand the issues and live in areas where they would be immediately affected. Get them on board and get their input. They would be an advisory committee only to the board, but I think they'd be a real, a real good resource for us.
Are you volunteering to draft the charter for that said committee?
I think we had one. There's probably one we could drum up from before.
It may need to just be resurrected.
Yeah.
We had a master plan of some kind for the airport, and it it does need to be updated. It's it's quite old at this point.
So are you volunteering to do that, Dan?
Behind Mike.
You what? You're looking for Mike's help?
I will help him.
Okay. Very good. And then what we could do is we could act on that, or it certainly would be timely after the meeting on the 26th, right, Mike?
On what meeting? What day?
Well, we have an airport presentation being made on the 26th.
You're not talking 26th of December?
No, 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 no. No. No, it gives you, it gives you, yeah.
All right, Dan, well, you have to stay on me about that.
Right. All right, Tracy? Individual items?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
You're good? Eric, you good?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. All right, that concludes our business. Now to the town administrator.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have a vote on the consent agenda about first withdrawing the United Steelworkers contract language due to a glitch, I was not able to get that document to you in advance. It'll be back on the agenda for the 15th. A memo with the contract will be to you later this week.
All right, so moved. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay, town administrator updates.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, you were given a communication, the board was, from the director of the libraries concerning returning to a curbside-type pickup situation. Prior to the meeting tonight, I spent about an hour with Mr. Murphy and Mr. Grills as it relates to the present COVID status in town. I would ask, we are not, just to be clear, under a Board of Health order to do anything. We're not under a state order, and in fact, the governor mentioned today he wasn't interested in expanding, like, shutdowns or anything like this. So in this particular case, because of the issues that I find, like, with the library, it's kind of a harder environment to control from a safety perspective for both the patrons and for the staff, that I wanted to put it to you to decide if you wanted to allow administration to go back to the curbside collection system until such time our positivity rate comes back to where it was in the summertime. Just to kind of give you an idea, I'll have more information for you for the next meeting. But when you compare this latest one-month trend to where we were back in the high point in May, we are significantly higher in positive test rate. We are higher in significantly in the number of cases managed. What I don't know is the breakdown by age, where before predominantly was elderly folks and to, from what I understand now, we don't have the same particular situation in the assisted living community that we had in the past, although that could change. The second thing is I don't know, I don't have the detail on hospitalizations or how it lays out. I know hospitalizations across the state are up, but we haven't had any information from Cape Cod Hospital. So I'm inclined, based on the commentary that I received from the director, but I wanted to make sure that it was in your domain to have a weigh-in on that topic as it relates to other town buildings. We continue to monitor the situation. I feel like this building, we're heavily protected here. We have a good control system for the public. I'm I'm okay, and I talked to Director Murphy, he's okay with how we approach things here. We do hopefully get a good report on Zoom so that if the board, I know you had a discussion with the chairman, might have had a discussion with the individual items, if you wanted to move to a Zoom format, I believe we're ready to do that. If you want to stay in this configuration and Zoom in, I believe we can now do that as well. So, you know, in this particular situation, I feel like the libraries is probably the one area where we should take a look at, for sure.
Let's start with the library. Does anybody have any concerns or objections going back to the the drop-off or drop-by, drive-by?
What do the health people think?
They supported the director's recommendation to go back to curbside. And by the way, while we were in curbside, it was a very successful, very popular program. You know, the the staff was available to help people. I I don't think we lose a lot by shutting down the buildings because we're still providing that service. There are obviously some folks, a very few amount, like, who come to town hall because they want to see people, who probably go to the library because they want to see people. But in weighing it all out, when you're talking about a service and, you know, the staff is predominantly older there and there is a concern, and it is a harder environment to control, there's no question there is.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? What services through curbside are we not able to get to the public? And were there any comments on that the last time we were at this?
So computer access, obviously, and we haven't had computer access since COVID, since we reopened. So that's one that they, we cannot accommodate. But most everything else, we're giving it advanced notice. Programming, we've been able to go to a computer-based, like, type of programming with the librarians. So I don't have a specific, but there could be some reference activities, research activities that people might use, but I believe with enough advanced notice, they can dialogue with the reference librarians to make sure that whatever documents or data they need, they can get. Staff will still be working. We're not going to furlough like we did last time, so we can accommodate special needs. And, you know, if somebody calls and says they need to get X, Y, Z, I'm sure we can accommodate that. Jane is very good at doing that.
So the last time we talked about it as well, there was some conversation about the internet access and working with the senior center to get tablets to those who maybe didn't have that connection to the outside.
So there is a very small amount of tablet activity that's being done through the senior center for those folks. I I think part of the challenge with the tablets is the same audience often that has challenges, communicate. I, I think part of the challenge with the tablets is the same audience often that has challenges communicating with us have challenges with the tablet, we found out as well. But, you know, if somebody were to pick up the phone, even with senior services, there's staff available to address their individual needs. Much like it's been here at Town Hall since the beginning, we haven't turned anybody away. I, I think the biggest thing that you miss is the socialization of being able to come to a, a nice, warm environment and poke through things at your leisure and enjoy the time at the library. And unfortunately, that's just a situation we can't replicate anywhere else.
Well, and, and that's the one thing about the, of the internet connection, I think, um, that's extremely important for these people that are, um, starting to feel extremely isolated and suffering, uh, potentially from depression, that if we can get them some type of connection, if, even if it's not physical to the outside, uh, without being in a physical library, I think that that would be really good, to the extent we'd be able to, to get them. Because some people, they don't have internet in their homes, so they do go to the library for that and without having any outside access, I'm concerned.
If, if I might, um, in terms of the library, I think the biggest piece that we'll be missing is the, um, periodicals and the daily newspapers that we have subscriptions to. So people would come and read the New York Times every day, read the Boston Globe. They didn't buy it themselves and, uh, or different periodicals that they didn't want to do. So that, that's a loss. But, um, in terms of, of the tablet issue, as we went through the senior center, first the, the list of a hundred most, um, concerning vulnerable, um, residents and then beyond that, we, we did work with T-Mobile and we had the, the tablets, and they didn't want them. They weren't comfortable with them. They weren't really wanted them in the house. They started, but then they don't have, um, even the connection, connectivity within the neighborhood. We're working on Channel ninety-nine and Channel eighteen that we're putting on exercise classes and other connective classes every day. So you'll see now from, um, seven to eight in the morning on Channel eighteen, and then from five o'clock on, we're running senior-oriented programming. And we're sending it out in newsletters and we're letting people know about it. And the librarians are doing a lot of virtual stuff that, um, is going through some of the mail and, and some other things too. So it's not just, you know, they're setting up a program that you do and then you come back or a reading club of some kind. So I think we're, we're reaching out pretty well, but those, those tablets were there and they didn't want them.
Hmm, interesting.
Will help.
Yeah, no, that makes me feel better.
All right, so no one has an objection to the, uh, to the.
I think he's looking for, um, a vote, so I'd make a motion that we allow the library to roll back to curbside delivery.
Second? Anyone?
Second.
Okay, motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, next item.
I'll continue to update you based on the situation. I mean, it is, you know, you know, like I said, we're not seeing it in any particular pockets like we saw before. It's all over.
What were the restrictions there, Dan, prior to curbside? What are they doing now?
As far as.
The access with the library?
Oh, so there's.
They must have some kind.
Well, I mean, there, there is a, like, a number of how many people, how many patrons can come in at a time. But the single biggest thing we stopped was the computer activity because of the, uh, uh, germ contamination, if you will, in the close proximity. Everything else has been just, you wouldn't probably even know that, other than the mask-wearing. And I was told earlier that, you know, obviously, we're, we've been into this now for nine months. Some people are just really having some personal challenges, and the staff didn't like getting into those conversations with people. So, um, I, I, I think what we did learn, by the way, by keeping this building open, there is a subset of our population here that despite all of our efforts by telephone, by computers, by whatever, they like to do their business here in person. Um, and we heard that loud and clear. So we're still seeing, like, between forty and fifty people a day. I thought after the elections it would go down.
Right.
But it hasn't. And actually, I was told by Mr. Grills today, uh, that building permit activity is up like three hundred percent over last year. So what we're seeing is, you know, and in the contractor grouping, they're coming in, uh, frequently for, you know, finishing a permit, you know, getting advice on things. And so we, we arrange that by, uh, phone call appointments. And so it's, we try to limit the, the walk-in activity. So based on all that I've seen since July, since we've opened, I, I am really reticent to do anything different than what we're doing here, than what we're doing now because of that contact that we witnessed amongst the people that wanna come in the building every day. So.
Thanks, Dan.
The only other public facility open, by the way, to the public is the police station lobby because of records and things of this nature and the water department, uh, because we, uh, fully staff them now and they keep a window open four hours a day as well.
Very good.
Other than that, um, you had the best update imaginable on wastewater and where we have with that, so.
Yep, well done. Anything else? Any other business before the board? Hearing none. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.